You get that back to me when you're done reading it, that'd be great.
Yes, I am.
Let's wait just a moment for our city administrator to have some water. So we helped with the cell phone room earlier today. Just this chamber thing, having a great time. The coffee sets for the boiler, not the boiler was broken. Okay, sorry. Welcome, everyone. It is six oh two. City Council meeting, seven p.m. to order. Roll call, please. Um, Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Lululela.
Here.
Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Thar.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember comic.
Here.
Councilmember Best. Also, Hudson. And Councilmember Hill?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, if you'd all please join me for the optional pledge of allegiance along with the event. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end. Thank you. Um, before we get to the approval of the agenda, I am going to suggest two small changes. One is to move Resolution forty-four. This is a revisitation of our resolution to designate signatories for the city's bank accounts to the consent agenda. We've seen these type of resolutions before. This is no different. We've just had a change in who our signatories are. Um, the other uh, agenda change I would like to suggest is adding the planning department report back to our department reports for tonight. Are there any?
Yeah, I have a question about action items nine A and B. Is there a reason they're not under the consent agenda?
I was advised that since, even though these are reoccurring events that the city has seen before, um, it is the first time I have been writing the reports and it's the first time technically that this council has seen this version of these reports. So, um, we were advised to just make them quick action items instead of consent agenda.
We're still trying to feel our way for what belongs easily in the consent agenda and what is just too fast. And so we'll definitely continue this.
And at first, once a bigger events, we will likely lean towards putting them on the regular agenda unless you all let us know that, you know, we've seen these enough times, we're generally good with them and we could put them on consent. So we're happy to take feedback if there are things that you would be okay with on the consenting.
So if everyone is okay with moving Resolution forty-four to our consent agenda and adding the planning department report back to department reports, I would entertain and approve a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Councilmember Luna moves to approve the agenda as amended.
Tom, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Please, Steve.
Steve President, London, New Orleans, Third Street, being certain women's who pass the state. So, um, I forgot to bring my monkey articles log to how many pronounces D word that's in this book. Um, and the explanation, I think, this is a book called One Tyranny, Twenty Lessons from the Twentieth Century. It's, um, written here, published in two thousand seventeen. I'm gonna read the first page real quick. The prologue, history and tyranny. History does not repeat, but it does instruct. As the founding fathers debated our constitution, they took instruction from the history they knew. Concerning that democratic republic, they envisioned would collapse. They contemplated descent of ancient democracies and republics into a Hobgardiian empire. As they knew in Aristotle, we warned that inequality brought instability. But Plato believed that demagogues exploited free speech to install themselves as tyrants. Now, the demagogues or demagogues, or however you pronounce that, um, playing on popular prejudices to become embalmed, whatever you call the definition I ran there. Um, and we see that now on a national level with Mr. Trump. His latest thing was exploiting some kind of rumor about immigrants eating people's pets. Um, and it would take hours to go through all his misstatements, I think, at least an hour. Um, what I'm concerned about tonight is, um, I talked about this at some point. This was Sunday, July seventh, two thousand twenty-four Denver article. And it's, uh, lobbyists who paid nearly seventy million last year. Um, so this again is from July seventh. And it just Lake County has one of the big tent for groups that took the most lobbying positions by the bills. Now, it's cured so Colorado Bankers, Colorado Hospital, Association of Boulder Chambers, Advent Health, Special District Association of Colorado, Denver Metro Chamber, Congress, County Sheriff's in Colorado, South Metro, Denver, Chambers, City of Colorado Springs, and then Lake County. And I'm wondering, um, if government is being proactive on this lobbying effort or if the government is just um, doing what the daily demands of business would be current. But what I'm trying to say is, if someone, if we have a group that's strongly lobbying against the interests of the public, um, we should be aware of the lobbying efforts are. And at the same time, we should be affecting our own lobbying efforts. Thank you, Tom.
One second, relax. As usual, you are absolutely on time. Is there anyone, uh? Jane, please come up.
Jane Haraldson, one seventy-two, Rafferty here on behalf of PB Swims. There was concern with some elected officials and the public about, um, a pool fund sitting and growing, but no pool. So we have that citizens initiative on the ballot, say the citizens approve it and half a penny sales tax goes into this fund and grows, but no pool. That's a valid concern. So we at PB Swims, we still intend to renovate the aquatic center we have. It is shovel ready. Forty-five thousand dollars worth of work was done in twenty twenty-one for required upgrades that brought the mechanical room up to code. We have a ten-year plan divided into three phases to renovate our existing aquatic center. The aquatic center itself, that's an eleven million dollar project and the school district numbers say that renovation of that building is sixteen million. Lake County government at their work session last week presented this plan from our feasibility study contractors. Seventeen million for a new aquatic center plus recreation facility. Um, that feasibility study contractor, Bob McDonald from OLC, said at best to build the new aquatic center is two years out. And that's if you have the money. As you know, we don't even have the money to, um, for phase one, the three million dollars, three to four million dollars to bring our existing aquatic center to code. But we'll get there and we believe the sales tax passing will help us get funders to fund this capital project. So I'm just here tonight just to try to explain to you, um, our position at PB Swims and let you know, yeah, it's, um, don't worry about that. We'll get our pool. It's not a matter of, um, if, but when. Thank you all for serving.
Thank you, Jane. Uh, yes, Mary.
Mayor Green, city council. Uh, I'm here really just to thank you, uh, so much from the Main Street program. And, um, this is something, the program has really matured in the last nine years and, and with your help, it's, it's really, uh, is getting a lot done. Uh, what brings into mind is we picked, we picked up the thousands of flowers today. We're gonna pick up the pots on Thursday, but all the flowers have gone off the avenue. They had a good run. We only got about two months of flowers, which it just doesn't seem like enough, but, but they really do dress up the town, something we're really proud of. Something I hope that, that we're all proud of. So, um, and, and I especially want to thank the street department. They are so helpful every step of the way, um, in terms of, of helping us to, to, to accomplish this. So thank you, Tony. You, um, I, you know, and so we still have a lot going on this year on the Main Street program. We have an auction on October the fifth. And then we have Trick Treat Street, which we're doing in conjunction with the county rep department. Um, and then we have Shop Small, which is the first Saturday after Thanksgiving. And then we have, uh, Party Lights. So we're not running out of things to do, uh, but, but today felt like a hallmark to me um, in terms of, of when the flowers come off the avenue, that's the end. I know summer got over till Thursday, but it yields, you know, when, when is summer over the twenty-second? None of it. If today kind of felt like summer was over, so we'll see how it goes. And another way that the city is so helpful is in terms of, of the speaker systems. Uh, and, and with the mayor's help, uh, just recently we had, uh, the community dinner. And we have the speaker systems out there. We turned right around and used it again at the, at the Irish Mobile palpitations last weekend. So, um, I just feel really good about, about all the different things the city does for our community. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give public comment for items not on the agenda? Sure, there's nobody hiding. Is there anyone online who would give, like to give comment for items not on the agenda? Raise your hand. We're just. Okay, seeing none. Let's move on to our newly modified consent agenda. This includes a variety of minutes from our meetings on March nineteenth, August sixth, August twentieth, September third. Thank you, Ms. Bushman, and thank you to Bree Ortiz, who is not here, for getting these minutes together for us. In addition, there's Resolution forty-four, which is the resolution designating signatories to our city's bank accounts. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Luna moves to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Great. Thank you very much. Let's move right along to presentations. We have a presentation from Cascade Claim LLC Annexation. Thanks.
We're, we're gonna hear our presentation on Zoom, so folks who don't have it, that can group it.
What I really want to know is, did you bring Cascades?
Um, it was, we debated, um, but instead you'll have to sell for a photo of her in the PowerPoint slides. Great, huh? Number three. Great. Um, so my name's Joya, um, six one seven East of three, um, and April, and you're all good stuff. And we're here about an annexation proposal that we have. Um, we've been speaking with Chieftain about it for the better part of the year. And so we're really excited to be here today with all of our homework done. Um, so a little bit of context on our annexation proposal. Um, the two of us are current Level residents and we own a parcel of land, um, that's currently a mining claim. And it's mostly within the city, but there's a little bit in the county. Um, and so we're requesting that city council considers annexing the bit of Indian County into the cities. That way we can have one continuous plot of land in order to fill it up. Um, so in addition to that, we sort of haven't asked that we can set up potentially a work session with all of you, um, later next month to discuss the details, but we wanted to kind of lay out our preliminary proposal. Um, so a little bit about us. Um, most importantly, that's Cascade. Um, that's where the, um, in storage, the LLC, um, that's its name brand. Um, and that's for, um, the parcel that's in question. Um, so the property is owned wholly by an LLC called Happy Land Plan. Um, of the people are the words we own it fifty-fifty. Um, we've both been full-time residents Level for the last four years and we intend to stay in Level, um, as long as we can. Um, and we purchased this property with the intentions of building homes for each of us. Um, and we don't really have any plans to develop it beyond that. Um, so just for, um, to kind of give you all a little visual on where we are talking about. The mining claims that we purchased are on the east side of Level where, um, they stretch from north of Foul Street down to south of Eighth Street, Eighth Street, east of Ash Street. Um, it's currently all undeveloped and open land. Um, and we've owned it for about a year. So you can see on the map, and it's small, but the gray part is the county and the white part is the city and it's kind of a funky shape. Um, we think it's called American Eagle because if you look at it, it kind of looks like. That's, that's Joy's thought. Great. So a little bit more about the background and the land. Um, we purchased what are essentially two overlapping but adjacent mining claims about a year ago now. Um, and we knew when we purchased them that it was sort of funky, two parcels. The seller, who also lives up here on the side, um, did a great job disclosing the background of the claims. Um, and we were delighted that when we actually commissioned the legal survey, it confirmed that what we thought we were buying wasn't that we were buying, which is not always the case we have heard with mining claims. Um, and so we did, you know, we did commission this full survey, uh, which is helpful both for us, we think also for the city and talking with Chieftain and reading the twenty fifteen city plan. Think that, that east side is a bit of, um, uh, a mess, um, from a boundary perspective. And I know that, I think the city worked Morrison to also sort it out. So we're glad we can also contribute to that, um, just knowing at least we're part of the boundaries far for that, um, for that length of there. Uh, and as Roy mentioned, uh, we are, I think, at least in recent integrated talking with Chieftain, we're the, um, the first non-developers who have come forward to request annexation. Um, I were, I know some of you know, for those of you who don't, we're not, we're not developers. Um, we really like to use all this parcel. We saw an opportunity to build houses that have foundations. Um, and so that's why, that's really our intention for this. Um, and the preferred location for our two houses, they're actually on the same square block. If you will, or what would it play to a square block? If, you know, there are lots of there. Uh, but that's between ninth and ten, uh, just north of Ash Street. We'll need to look up some more detailed maps in a moment. Uh, great. So the two orange rectangles on the right-hand side of the spot, these are the proposed house locations. Um, and as you can see, they are limited to that block between ninth and ten, which is nice because it keeps the rest of land within for recreation. I think, um, some folks here are probably very familiar with the information that happens on that part. Um, and so this is really the nice the gap on the overall community and keeps the rest of the land within recreation. Um, and in addition, it gave more to access and maybe it just makes things cleaner for the city because there's no overlap anymore. We have these finite boundaries. You sort of, you all know what's in um, what's in the city and also therefore subject to your own regulations, um, for, for land use and funding, zoning, all that. And, and so our, as Roy mentioned at the start, our goal for this presentation is to request a working session, uh, in actual order so we can really go into more detail on what makes sense for the city, what makes sense for us. Um, so our preference is, is this annexation. We do have a backup plan that, um, is an alternative that we can annex, uh, that places, that spreads out the houses a little bit more, um, since we, so we want to feel the same boundary issues. More of the houses would be very similar to the first, one of the first locations you saw on the previous slide. Another one would then be spread out to give each house a new parcel over on, um, Broadway, near about that street right now. This is not our preferred, um, layout. It doesn't really maximize our views and we also, you know, we're, anyway. Um, so it's not our preferred layout. We also don't think it really benefits the public, um, because as I mentioned, that they're sort of more spread out. There, it takes away some of the recreation assets that the public is used to enjoy. In a moment, we'll get into some like the twenty fifteen plan there as well. Um, but anyway, if you want to share that, you know, we have, we have an alternate plan. We don't love it as much. We don't make you all love it as much, uh, but do you want to fully disclose what the two different, um, locations are looking at? So Joya spent some quality time with the twenty fifteen plan, uh, and, and also, um, really a number of conversations with Chieftain. He's been extremely helpful, um, in, in getting us up to speed and talking about prior precedents. Yes, the Chieftain, um, told us that we should come to you all with what we think is a reasonable proposal. Um, so I read through the, the twenty fifteen, um, city plan. It was real bigger, um, and, you know, there is no annexation ordinance. But, um, so we had to kind of look at other precedents, like, so you come up with a big answer. Um, and there are actually three different annexation proposals that were for parcels of land that were completely outside of the city of Level and they were quite large. And the reason for annexation was, um, firstly, first of all, lot sizes. Um, our reason for annexation is just to put like a bit of the land that we own in the county into the rest of the land that we own in the city. So we didn't feel like the precedent there really applied to our situation. But in beginning of the city, um, components plan, um, I saw a few things where maybe we could offer the community a benefit with our annexation. Um, the first one is, as April said, confirming some of the boundaries on the east side, picking that up. Um, also, we would be willing to offer an easement for both walking paths and merchant vehicles through our property. Um, currently, there's no right-of-way, um, that the city has, um, through our property, which would close off any, like technically any access beyond, um, our property. Obviously, we've undergone a year and we haven't done that. But, um, you know, just like you can make it formal that we would allow, um, that type of access through our property if we were to work with us on annexation. Um, so to summarize, um, you know, you, we'd like to ask the city council if it would be open to considering annexing two acres of the property claim into the city of Level. And, you know, if so, if we're open to, especially, you know, working question.
Are there any questions? Excellent. Uh, I guess I'd be curious of our planning department. I know Chieftain's out, but Alex, do you have any thoughts on this?
This is a newer project team and, uh, one part I did here is that, um, that there'll be just some considerations for just how the roads have been used in that area is all. And there's a lot of recreation that happened on those roads and I know we're trying to be sensitive, but that's the only thing I can see that could be related. It's just how we can might link up to those roads, like East nine, three, seven, three, twelve, but that's as far as I have anything to comment on.
I guess the one concern I have about this is the timing. Um, October is usually when we're already deep, knees deep into the budget season and not really scheduling much work sessions outside of that. So I'm worried if we were to take up some time to, uh, review this rather than, um, continue working on the budget, that would potentially impact our ability to fully, uh, purse through the budget.
I kind of wonder if we really need a work session on it. I, I'm not familiar with annexation and all the considerations. So maybe this is naive of me, but it, it seems like fairly simple to create the proposal and then we wouldn't necessarily need a work session. It could be with city staff and then we can discuss it. Um, but if someone feels otherwise, I'd be welcome to hearing that.
I mean, I would agree with that. We place a lot of faith and trust in our planning department. Um, they're quite excellent. I know we're are, are kind of have one wheel missing right now, just paddling down the river somewhere, uh, but you know, when that individual returns, when Chieftain returns, um, I would feel very comfortable having inside of a planning department report them talk about this. And if there were things at that point that seemed to need some council consideration to, to take, I, I, I would, I would take it under advisement.
Was it Chieftain who asked you to ask for a work session?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of a little.
And it's official procedures. We're very comfortable with your guidance.
Yeah, I, I think that we usually schedule work sessions for two hours and that's our normal six to eight is, and I don't think we need two hours. I mean, there's, the, the state law has eligibility requirements for annexation. So the staff report would indicate on its face whether or not this application meets the eligibility requirements. You know, it sounds like you've had a lot of meetings with Chieftain. From my understanding of annexation, at least on its base, meets some of the requirements. Once those requirements are met, it's not mandatory, whereas it's voluntary. So then the question becomes, what are the, the factors? And, and what we have asked in annexation is that the property owners indicate what benefit it would be to the city. And you've heard that in the presentation right now. So if you're comfortable with it, we could have, you know, uh, either Chieftain, I think it's a great idea to present, uh, our planning director to present in his department reports. And then if there are more questions that he can go and research that, then he does that and then come back with the actual action item for you to all hear. And as you know, we can have action items on your agenda that if you have too many questions on, we can kick to the next agenda. So it seems to me that's the most efficient use of time given as Councilor Lululela pointed is, we're probably going to have work sessions from now until the end of the year. The whole.
I want to thank you guys for a very thorough presentation in our pocket, like every question I had. I was like, oh.
So just to make sure I understand the path forward, uh, we'll work with, with Chieftain and Alex, uh, they'll put together recommendations for planning zoning. Uh, if there are open questions or, or do you call it act, action, or if there are those, then he will then pass those on to city council in a meeting such as this. And we can determine at that time, if we can answer those questions, we'd be allotted time on your agenda or maybe we need to take it to a work session.
So we have several items even on this agenda that are action items and these are, uh, uh, okay, so we can discuss and ask questions. And I think
Great.
Because, I mean, you're right, none of the annexation precedent. Well, it seems to be a particular situation, which seems fairly straightforward to me. Maybe I am also being naive. But I think it, I think from a time management standpoint, it would fit very nicely under an a, an action item discussion after Chieftain and then Alex get through, you know, massaging into there.
That's, I'm grateful. Well, thank you for your time today.
Yeah, thank you.
Take up more, too much more time here. We've been having a dear. Yeah, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to department reports. City Administrator.
All right. Uh, great. Thank you. Well, I have a very important first announcement to make. So, uh, thank you to everyone who participated in our selection process for our new police chief. I'm happy to announce that the unanimous recommendation of all the panels and the feedback that I received made my decision very easy. Uh, city has selected Mr. Dan Treoka as our police chief and, uh, he's kind enough to join us this evening. I think he's, uh, you've got, all got a chance now to meet him. Uh, I think that the process was, having gone through it the first time with KRW as our consultant, I think their advice was good about how to conduct the process. I just wanted to report that on, at our town hall, we had sixty people in attendance, which is, is a great turnout for, for. Which is is a great turnout for for, uh, you know, an event that. Is on a, you know, uh, weeknight and it was a great event where people could engage one on one. With each of the candidates. So I want to thank each of the candidates. Uh, I think they, um. You know, they endured the process, uh, and I think it, uh, it worked well to to hone everybody's opinions. And it was very nice that everybody's opinion was in the sa- is was in consensus. Uh, and, you know, especially since they represented such a cross section of our community. Uh, I spoke to Finn McNally of the the Herald this morning. He asked who was on the panels. And it just occurred to me, it was so many people from so many different aspects of our community and that. Uh, I appreciate everyone's time because we did take pretty much all day on Friday, um, to to come down, so. Mr. Treoka, would you like to introduce yourself and say, uh, a few words if you don't mind coming up to the lectern? Uh, Mr. Treoka's already very excited and chomping at the bit. I think I heard you told me that he's already introducing himself. To businesses around town and getting their input on ideas that they may have, so. I appreciate your enthusiasm.
You bet. I'm, uh, I'm excited for this opportunity and I appreciate being given this opportunity. I'm anxious to get here and do as much as I can to. Help with the police department and help this community. My daughter is lived here for several years. Her husband has a business here. And, uh, I was amazed as I've been walking along town the past two days, the reception and I'm I'm going to businesses in particular. Uh, the reception I've been getting from business owners and employees. It's been wonderful and it's been warm. And I've been getting some fantastic questions, so thank you for bringing me this opportunity.
Welcome. We're extremely pleased to have you.
And just, uh, we we we, uh, the mayor said, we, uh, who said we can't hire anymore people named Dan? Uh, so we we have, are fondly going to, and I think he's agreed, uh, police Dan. We have fire Dan, we have IT Dan, Breyer's okay going with Breyer and Hanson's okay with going with Hanson. So I I I will tell you, uh, I'm leading into my next announcement, which was we have a human resources director position. Uh, posted because as you all know, uh, Paige has decided she needs a little more work life that, uh. Uh, Ms. V Hill decides she has, needs a little more work-life balance. I I think we will not hire someone named Dan unless they are hands down the most fabulous candidate.
Yeah, I don't think we can use that. It probably violates some HR criteria.
Then you can't. No, I don't think it does. I think it's just simply your name, but. And yeah, I I wanted to say thank you for everybody for your your efforts in the police chief selection process. I think it was, we got some good feedback about. You know, a few things we could tweak, but I think overall people seem pleased with the process. Uh, like I said, we have a human resources director position posted. We have received some applications. Uh, we are in the process of scheduling interviews and hoping to get that position built as quickly as possible. Uh, which also leads me to, I think, uh, one of the issues I'm going to talk about at city hall is workload, work-life balance. And that I want to make sure that we are not burning people out. And given that, I think what we're going to see and sort of prelude to the budget is that we do need more staff. To prevent our current staff from burning out and so in discussion, um, with this administration staff, we, uh, truly believe that we need a. A a part-time position supportive finance. Uh, I have had a goal for a very long time that our finance director is a true finance director. And looks at the long-term financial picture of the city and, uh, Ms. Sheil is fantastic, but we found that her day-to-day tasks of accounts payable. Payroll, just absolutely paying the bills and and maintaining the business is not. Does not leave any time for long-term financial planning, so we would like to, uh, create that position. And so you all know that I can fill positions, uh, but I cannot create them, so we were we're trying to decide if it would be worth, uh. Doing it sooner or waiting for the budget session to include it in our budget. The answer is we need the position sooner, uh, getting into budget season. E- even if there's a payroll week, uh, it's still, we are still working to make payroll more efficient. But it just takes up too much of Ms. Sheil's time to be able to have to monitor what we're doing with accounts payable and. Day-to-day getting checks cut, reconciliations, those types of things, so. I'm giving you a heads up that we are, you will probably see a resolution. Hopefully in the next meeting to create a part-time, uh, payroll purely payroll, uh, finance, uh, uh, support position. Uh, coming up on talking about budget season, we reminder that we are going to have a goals work session. Goal-setting work session next Tuesday here at city hall at six P M. We're going to be, w- because we have so many work sessions before the end of the year. I'm trying something. We'll see if it works. We're trying to do all the departments in one night. Last time we did, I think, two different sessions. So we're going to see how it goes. Uh, I will like, I would like to, I've been working with each of the departments. I've met with each of the departments to go over their goals. With the city, we like to keep things more simple and straightforward, so, uh, the goals will be in the packet. Department heads are not going to read you the goals. They're going to sit and explain to you some of the why behind many of the goals and why they're priorities. I'm hoping that each department's goals are going to be about a page, uh, so that we can really focus on questions that you may have about it. A lot of things are not going to come as a surprise. There are things you've been hearing from departments and their department boards, so. Uh, I wanted to let you know our planning director will still be on vacation and that is a wonderful thing that he has a well-earned vacation. He was very worried about not being present for the goal session, but I met with him before he left. I will be presenting the goals on his behalf and answering any questions. And, um, uh, we will, I think, I haven't, I can't remember. I confirmed with Alex that he can be there, or Mr. Willis, that he can be there as well. I will also be presenting the human resources goals. Ms. V Hill, that was me before she left. And we have been working on, uh, human resources goals as well. Couple other dates I wanted to flag for you. I sent a flyer around today. The Leadville Workforce Center is having an open house. September twenty-fifth from one to three P M. The workforce center has been a fantastic resource for us, for imposing our positions and helping us. Get some positions built. Uh, they're also a fantastic resource for our community, so I wanted to announce that. Uh, Claire Hathaway from the Office of Emergency Management wanted me to mention the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's only a small three hundred-page document, so, uh, right now their public comment portion is open on that document. So if you have strong feelings about hazard mitigation, clearly our biggest ones are, uh, heavy winter activities, wildfire, but. Planning for these is imperative, as we saw with the, um, interlock and fire. It can, it can be devastating, so. Uh, Office of Emergency Management will be hosting two informal drop-in events for community to give feedback. Events will be Thursday, September nineteenth, um, the one at at city hall. And the second one will be at the Southern Fire Station and for some reason that date is missing on my notes. That is on the flyer that I circulated to, uh, city council today and it's also going to be posted on our front door. Um, speaking of busy schedules. You are seeing a lot of things on your agenda because we're trying to get a lot of projects across the finish line before the end of twenty twenty-four. And there are big efficiency projects that are are desperately needed, so. Well, my request is that we not take any pro- new projects on until we can get some of these other projects across the finish line. As you know, our meetings are finishing closer, you know, between nine and ten P M. I think someone suggested this general rule and I think it's a good one, that we perhaps should not be taking on any additional big projects until our meetings are finishing up. Closer to eight P M, which means that staff has the bandwidth to do these projects. If you see planning has a number of projects coming up. Administration has a number of projects coming up. Uh, the the burden to get those projects before you takes months of time and negotiation, so. I think we we want to prevent burnout and kind of give everybody a little breath. Especially since we're coming up on budget season as well. A couple of final notes. Uh, one of the things we are trying to do is cut city costs and look at. Ways that the city can going into twenty twenty-five save money because I think we need to repair from sales tax flat. One of the issues we, um, noted, our finance director brought to my attention, is that we were losing substantial amounts of money on the E V charging station. Uh, so we have, I think approximately, uh, we are. In the red eleven thousand dollars so far. And so just based upon a little informal feedback, we are one of the cheapest, were one of the cheapest charging stations in Colorado. For what we are charging, so I had Ms. Ortiz look into standards for rates and we will be changing the rates at the E V. Charging station to be consistent with the, uh, rate in Colorado, which is, um, uh, forty-five cents per kilowatt hour. And we will be charging if someone just parks their vehicle there after the charge is finished. There will be a a charge for occupying that space. If you're not charging your vehicle. So hopefully with those measures, the little, there's a little more nuance to it than that, but hopefully with those measures, we will be breaking even. At the E V charging station. Uh, if that turns into be a problem and no one's using it anymore, we will reevaluate. Uh, but I do think for us, I I'm hoping that at E V charging station is being used by people who are visiting our community. That rates will be slightly cheaper and off-hours and that can be used by people in our local community. So off-peak hours will be less expensive. Last thing, an update on eight oh nine spruce, uh, the work has resumed. Uh, K W is resuming work and has been working again. I spoke to, uh, Centennial Real Estate. And they gave me an update. They were going to get some more information and let me know, however, Barb has been out sick. So I did not get a further update on that, uh, but we also, Excel Energy has advised us they will be moving the gas line. At the house, it's not, uh, not anything that affects any of the tenants or any of the building, but, uh, one more project at eight oh nine spruce. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city administrator?
What's the latest on capturing, um, revenue from the short-term rentals? Past revenues that we might have missed in current.
You are going to get a resolution tonight from Decker Technologies, which is the contract. We're the company that will give us the the data to, uh, and help with.
Retroactive to?
That we can access retroactive data.
Uh, from the presentation that we got, they can, I said, how far back can you see in there? As far back as it exists, I think, so, yeah. So these are the ones we're trying to get across the finish line, uh, before the end. You'll see one more and it's cost-saving. Measure that you'll see in an upcoming council meeting, uh, as far as bundling our, um. Uh, what's the word? Communications.
Yeah.
I'm just getting that.
All right.
There's a fancy word for it, but we we looked at, uh, canceling a bunch of phone lines and consolidating all of our, uh, phone. And hopefully it will be saving the city about seven grand a year. We're, we're, we're trying.
No raindrop feels responsible for the flood. Other questions?
Oh, and after that, we will no longer be able to fax the city. I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Sorry. What we were trying to do.
No vaccine.
We were, we were, we were trying, we're debating whether or not we should maintain the fax line and we, I looked at everyone at the table and I said. Does anyone here know how to send a fax? And the answer was negative, so we 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 cut it.
Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, we are looking at cost-saving measures because I do think we need to be more careful about twenty twenty-five, yeah, so.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, let's move right on. Street department, Mr. Medina.
Uh, this will be fairly short, generic report. Month of August, we were pretty much busy with doing all of the events. So we spent a lot of time just preparing signage and setting up signs and in between that, we're doing. Uh, streets sweeping, cover digging, replacement down on the bottom. We still got a little paving out there to do down here. Uh, we were doing just about everything, anything that was coming up and, uh, spent a lot of time myself. Uh, keeping an eye on site wise and J H L and all the things. Well, they're doing very well. We're doing the restoration on second, third, and we have a horse feed this week. And it should be completed hopefully and they're actually doing, looking pretty good. They're doing hot patch and they're. Being very conscientious about it because they know one hundred very closely. Uh, we got some issues with, uh, H T over here with J H L, that means to. Unfortunately, they got more of the same that we expected them to, but they also understand that they're responsible for paving it back to the way we're looking for. We will take care of the highway. And that's still in the process right now. We're down on seven and may fall. Between six and seventh, uh, we'll be doing, uh, paving there and I did, uh, I'm making a agreement with them that. They will pave the entire road and we're only paying for a section of it, so we're going to get a full payroll on on that one there. Uh, I'm not sure if they're going to be willing to do that on the orange top. Seven Street from Maple up to Pine, but, uh, we're still talking about that. I think that, I figured they'll, we're, you know, we're getting ready in the fourth month for the winter. Um, I did, uh, actually have a new hire and we've got him in some training right now, getting him ready as well. And also we'll have, we'll have a little extra help this year. So we should be in kind of good shape with employees as well. And to, what's your other any questions?
Questions for Mr. Medina?
Um, thanks, Tony. Um, so how are your staffing look going into this winter versus last winter? Is it one extra person?
Okay.
Right, and will they be, what what will they be able to do? Will they be able to plow and?
Uh, he's in the process of obtaining a C D O.
Okay.
And he has the biggest equipment to, uh, experience, so we're going to get him more trained into, uh, smaller. Loaded than we have, so he'll be able to do the alleys and and stuff, which will break me. From doing the alleys and I'll be able to get into the other over and help all the city parking lots and everything. And do some of this little extra stuff that we're starting to pick up on different streets and alleys. And do better cleanup on, with a lot of larger equipment. I'll still have a small truck that'll be doing parking lots, so I'll be able to help out more with a larger over.
Thanks. Congrats on the new hire. And I was also curious, um, during the peak of event season. What percentage of your capacity do you think goes to those events? It sounds like it had a pretty big impact on your workload.
And do you have which event it is? Cause usually for the weekends, we usually spend our late Thursdays and, uh, Fridays. When we're on a five-day schedule to prepare for those. Uh, when we're on our four-ten's, uh, that's my overtime kind of kicks in because we have to. Set this, uh, sign down at a certain time before the events start and, you know, we have all that to maintain as well, um. I'd say probably about twenty-five thirty percent of our time throughout the week is going to be true events depending on. What we actually have to set up, uh, signage and get roads ready.
Yeah, thanks for, I know it's probably hard to quantify, but thanks for.
Yeah, there there's so much involved. We have to be able to do streets sweeping, we have to do the signs. Now, there's a lot of prep involved on that, so throughout the week you get a lot of actual things done at the same time. The guys are very good at all that testing.
Yeah, that.
Any other questions for Mr. Medina?
Uh, not a question, but a concern, uh, you don't really have to respond to it, but I've been told a million times by many peoples. I'm sure you already know, uh, that it's been almost impossible to really travel on the west side due to everything going on. It seems there's some serious congestion with, uh, both Excel and sanitation at one point. Um, uh, not too worried about it this year, nor do I expect a response, but for future years, uh. I think it is important to look at that. Make sure that we don't do that because, um, had, well, my coworkers have literally have to walk to work. Because they just, there's no way they could get around, uh, towards, uh, downtown, uh. One day specifically. Don't remember exactly where they live on the west side, but. That's.
Not thinking about it, it's a different problem though.
Yeah.
And that was an event day, uh, the last day of the week when Sitewise was actually working and has roads. Different roads, because one thing I make sure with these guys is they do not have. Different roads, because one thing I make sure with these guys is they do not have. Road closures within a block each other, this way there's always a way to go around them. They did very good about that this year, uh the crew this year is a lot more conscientious about that and they're a lot more courteous than they have been in the past. So that particular incident, it's the one I'm thinking of, uh there was, Harrison Avenue was blocked forward to H two.
That's.
And from one side to the other side, it was only half a block. Yeah, that uh.
But I I tried to explain that too, but they urged me.
I tried to explain.
Yeah.
But no, I understand, and that was just one of those situations where we really have no no control.
I just need serpent, serpent to me, so I'm driving home. Um any, any other comments or questions for Mr. Medina? Because I have one, um please, I, you know, there's a ditch across from where I live, where all the water. From up in town flows down along James and takes a hard right at second. And those new culverts that your team put in down second, we had a big rain event. Not too long ago, and instead of sort of backing up and pulling as that ditch open does, it was roaring. It was amazing, and I'm attributing it to those, those giant open culverts, it was tremendous.
I went out during that storm. Uh we've got that button up here before the end of the month and. We're going to be happy.
Yeah, it was really.
Down in that section.
Yeah, anyway, please pass that on, it it looks great.
Oh, they all checked. Just one section we were worried about.
Yeah. Fantastic, okay, thank you. All right. Let's move on to the police department. Some very exciting font on our department report.
I'm gonna present just briefly because Chief Brier is on vacation and so. I wanted to thank him for participating in the police department and police chief selection process, even though he was on vacation. Uh but now we've actually let him go where there's no cell service, so I. Wanted to get feedback on the uh how are we doing on the documents, any?
Um I think we can make.
Okay.
Um and Joe is out of the country and I know he wanted to. To meet and talk about how best to display this data. Um I I think the lack of a grid is is difficult. You know, so if we look at the street department reports where Tony puts in all the particular jobs and then the hours, like. You can follow a line across and this is just seems to be blank.
Gotcha, okay.
Like background, so it's a little hard to track for me.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's, that's just really rough to look at. Specifically forty eight, forty nine on our packet, uh fifty fifty one, it's. I I don't even know what I'm looking at and I thought that as well, um I I was a bit confused as to. Exactly what any of it meant and I didn't know if that was due to the lack of context. Which while you're present, I imagine that'd be easier to understand, but um preparing for the meeting. It's kind of like, okay, I don't know what any of this means.
And and I think some of the data is maybe not really necessary to. Convey to council like the time spent on calls. Or the number of people contacted on each call. Unless.
So I think maybe the the best thing to do is sit down and with the department and kind of go over why they're presenting this data. And if there's a reason for it, maybe we present it in a different format.
Yeah.
And I I would love to hear uh Chief Trump's thought on on how to present. Not necessarily tonight, but as we think, you know, you know.
Yeah, we have a habit of doing that, it's a short meeting, they're gonna ask you to come up and answer questions, so.
But how to present meaningful data that can help us understand what we're doing, what the trends are. How much it costs, you know? That sort of stuff, I think would be really helpful.
A- absolutely, and 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 I, I think that's the the stamp or the new chief will have coming into the office and looking at what. What his goals are and priorities are in, and I do want to say, you know, actually Chief Brier's done a fantastic job of trying to get the department ready. As uh ready as they can be for a new chief to come in and getting things organized and getting things cleaned up as and. Um but also leading opportunity for the chief to have his own uh stamp on the department. The other issue on the police department is that obviously you know there have been a number of significant tragic events that have been happening in our community and. Uh while I, you know, I think that. It, I hope it's an anomaly that these, these events are happening, I I do want to thank the police department for. Uh working very closely with the sheriff's office and having, uh despite. You know, everyone being shorthanded, a a very good communication and working relationship with the sheriff's office. And also the school district uh throughout the whole event, I, you know, I feel like. We were communicating well with each other about responsiveness and needs and it just goes to show that. The police department and the sheriff's office can have an excellent working relationship, so I'm I'm glad that that has, trend has continued. With that, happy day. Uh I, well, I'll steal that, I was gonna do the presentation, uh this and human resources, but I'll, um I will. Let you know, we have two additional uh police candidates who are in the pipeline, who we have made conditional offers to. Both of these candidates uh are going to need to attend post. Uh but both have accepted conditional offers and there's a few items just to check off the list. Uh but we are hoping that they will be joining us soon as police recruits. And with that, they can start getting some uh hands-on training and some experience in the department before we can get them to the academy. Uh the next step is to find out when the next academies are, so there's costs involved with that, the ones, academies that are closer to us. We know, might not have to do pay for, you know, lodging uh and and accommodations where. Uh some of the others further away, so the ones perhaps like. Uh Highlands Ranch or Glenwood Springs, we, it costs more for us because we, we do put the candidates up while they're there, so. We'll be looking to see when the next um academy and in hoping there would be the possibility to send both recruits to the same academy. Because there is a certain amount of camaraderie and and uh cohesion that comes out of attending the same academy, so. We're, we have found that, you know, when we have a number of candidates who are interested, it's just, there's so many boxes to check that. And personal lives and in perhaps relocating to Leadville, that out of. Four-ish candidates, five solid candidates, usually we end up with one or two, just because of so many hoops to jump through and. And also, you know, sometimes life, we've had some excellent candidates who've. Had some life event that prevented them from from joining us, but great news that two more candidates are in the pipeline.
What does that bring us to? My understanding is that we should have nine, including two CSOs.
Right, so we uh unfortunately lost Officer Barnett to the sheriff's office. So while that is unfortunate that we lost him, he is still in the community. So that takes us down um one officer, so we have then Sergeant Ortega. Um Officer Hanson, who technically is part-time, although he has been working full-time shifts for us for. Like three years, uh Officer Hanson, Officer Porzelt. Um who is covering nights and Officer Hanson, who's covering days.
So we're at seven out of the nine, if you were to magically move the two potential.
Um and Officer White. Right, so we brought Officer White on, um and so with that, those are our sworn officers and then our two CSOs.
So. So it's eight and then plus the chief, does that get included into that nine number or is that just for officers?
Uh it it, well, we definitely had posted a position and and uh Mr. Trump understands the working chief position, so. Uh that is a a chief who will be willing to take calls and go on calls and take shifts if needed, so yes.
So generally speaking, we're looking at a pretty well, mostly well-staffed. Police department right now, if everything pans out.
Uh I. Well, i- i- yes, uh but you remember we did talk about switching the shifts from twelve hours to ten hours. So we would, I would like to let our new chief get on board. And talk about the scheduling and see with that staffing if ten hour shifts. Because really, I mean, I think uh former energy Chavez shared with all of you that the white paper on why twelve hour shifts are just. Very difficult on law enforcement or any, anyone over a period of time. So the goal would be to get to ten hour shifts, and if we can do that with, you know, uh staggered staffing. So that we can achieve that, uh I think we're. I think we're close, I agree.
We, I know we talked about. The potential for on-call system rather than of like fully operational staff for certain hours. Of the night specifically, um would that be a consideration into those? Hours or is that separate?
Well, I I keep telling my opinion on that.
Good, I guess.
My opinion is, and in letting the new chief look at the department and decide. Um from the input I got from some of our officers, that there is a period of time in the night that that is a possibility. I'll tell you, the sheriff's office was vehemently opposed to that. I'm just, I'm giving you the factual situation is that I do think. An on-call system is potentially a solution. Because I know, and and again, we had that discussion with the sheriff's office, where, you know, some communities provide police coverage. You know, Monday through Friday, nine to five. And uh I don't think that's a reasonable, but I do think the call volume at some hours of the night. You know, it's, it's, you need someone there and you need someone there. You don't know when that's gonna be and and perhaps an on-call system is, is, is a sort of temporary solution, it wouldn't be what we want forever, but. And and again, I would leave that up to the chief once he's had a chance to look and see, uh I would love to hear his opinion.
Yeah, absolutely, I just want to keep those options open as we move into budget season and considering the potential concerns we'll be facing.
Yeah, true, I I'm a little curious, how did you reach eight people?
Two CSOs.
Because they don't share a call, right?
No, 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 but they're considered in.
They're just in the department.
Yeah, and they're considered part of the nine needed or budgeted, you know, the budget, so.
Because I think, at least my understanding, is to be fully covered without relying on the sheriff's department, is that we would need eight or nine officers.
Yes.
Out there.
Yeah.
Uh okay. Any other questions or comments on the PD? Okay, let's um. I was gonna do, I was gonna do fire department and then see where we wanted to get planning department then.
Hmm, okay.
Let's move on to the fire department, um. Daily.
Morning, Eric, morning, or uh good afternoon, or good evening, I should say, goodness, it's been one of those days. Uh just a few quick updates. I I may have already told you this, but the type three was deployed to the Remington Fire, it is back, it has been serviced. And then it will go on availability tomorrow with a different crew. Um so that may be deployed here pretty soon. The interlock and fire funding came in at eighty six thousand, one hundred and seventeen and sixty-three cents. Our next um funding that will come in will be from California, that's a hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six. And three cents, uh and then we have other deployment uh revenue that will be coming in as well. Uh ten students graduated from the Fire Academy on on August ninth, it was a great ceremony, it was the first one that we ever conducted down at Station Two. So that was really wonderful to be able to conduct it down there, uh the space was wonderful to be able to uh be able to just conduct that. Uh let's see, um nine candidates will go through a hiring process that we have for our resident reserve program here pretty soon. Those are not all um from the academy, uh we have also had interest from outside of the Fire Academy as well, so nine. Will go through the process and then we will try to fill our resident and reserve um slots. Uh appropriately after we go through that. Uh there was uh two SUVs that were caught on fire and it's a um a suspected arson, but it's still under investigation. Um let's see, uh the hazard mitigation planning is on September twenty-fourth down at Station Two. Uh let's see, and then um we had a promotion, we had a promotional process because Keegan Gorham unfortunately left us. To uh South Adams County, uh that was a tremendous loss to us, but uh we ended up promoting Sean Flanagan uh to our next engineer. And then we hired Mary Ellen Akava and she was uh went through our Fire Academy this last year. And just a quick CMC update. Uh Captain Gr- Captain Drury uh set up a live fire training with three scenarios that we did this last Sunday and it was absolutely wonderful. I actually went interior, um I haven't done that in years, so that was pretty cool. And um and then we're gonna just continue to do that with his expertise and utilizing um his. Um ways of going about doing training for the organization with that um agreement that we have with CMC. I think it's absolutely wonderful that we're doing this, uh Brian Brown, uh he's the apparatus consultant, um I know that you have. Maybe had some presentation in the past, but we hired a consultant to come out and do a um kind of just a overview of all of our capital fleet. And I'm really looking forward to working with him uh this month, twenty-third to the twenty-fifth. Um let's see, I I don't think, I think that is everything that I have currently right now, I'm just looking forward to Friday. Uh we needed a new grill for that, so I went over to uh Lowe's to get a new grill, because our other ones are just terrible, so. And I'll be cooking with fur burgers and hot dogs and that kind of thing this Friday, so I'll be looking forward to seeing everybody. Uh with that, that that ends my report unless there's any questions.
Chief Daly, I actually think you forgot to announce one gigantic yellow announcement.
I did, yes, I forgot to put that on the list, uh.
I'm just, I'm just saying, it's like, it was, it's a, it's a, I, there's a pun in there that I'm missing, uh. We're really climbing up the ladder as far as our equipment.
Yes, there you go, that works. Yeah, so uh the the ladder truck is here, uh I'm I'm, you might be able to just see it as you drive by beaming through the window. And um and it's a great ladder truck, everybody's starting their training on it and we're getting it out and uh getting it equipped. Taking inventory of the stuff that we actually did receive, Greater Eagle was really good to us and giving us a lot of equipment with it. So then we'll complement it with the equipment that we already had on our old truck. And we'll get through the training on it and then we'll put it in service, so it's a great piece of equipment, we got a heck of a deal on that.
Questions for Chief Bailey?
My Chief Dale, I just wanna know, when are you gonna take the gigantic Greater Eagle fire off the side of it? You can see, so if you drive by and you look through the window as you're, you're going east, you can still, we gotta, we gotta get our name on it.
Yes, here here pretty soon, we we gotta do some uh investigation on wrapping and decal-ing, so. We're working on that.
Individual painting.
Yeah, hopefully wrapping, yeah, we're gonna wrap it.
Okay. Questions for Chief Daly? Anybody wanna ask why yellow is a terrible color?
Well, there's so much wrong with Texas.
Okay, um thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm just gonna make an executive decision to put the planning department report in here.
It's, it's after me in the packet, if you want to order, but it's.
If you do it, I don't feel.
Oh, I sent an email, sorry.
Uh. Yeah, it's a void.
All right, uh never write to me, false alarm, then, sorry, Mr. Williams. Let's go on to HR.
So uh human resources, as you know, um Ms. V Hill's last day was Friday and we are. Uh hoping that she is able to come back to us in a part-time capacity, uh but work-life balance. Uh she made some difficult decisions, so we have that position posted. Project's still in the pipeline that uh again will require significant time to get to the finish line as in putting handbook. So Ms. V Hill and I were spending about two hours a week um going over it to fine tune all the remaining questions that we have. Our goal is to try and get that to you all before the end of the year, I don't know if that's going to happen with all of our uh other commitments, but. That is uh still in the pipeline and. Uh I. Yes, wire code.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, i- i- here's what I would like on that is, I I don't. Yeah, and I i i here's what I would like on that is I I don't need. You know, I I don't want the dress code to say this, it should say that, you know, I think. Our code says that from time to time, the city council will approve the policies and procedures for the city. You know, what I I think what we will have done is we worked with Lexible and their consultant on. Obviously, current state and federal law and their best practices recommendations. And then um Ms. V Hill and I worked on it and then we'll have city attorney review. So at that point, you can rest assured that a lot of it is it's looked been looked at it by a number of eyes. And if there are questions or things that have been jumped out at you, obviously, um but from a legal policy perspective. We hope that it'll be pretty tight by the time it gets to you all.
Does our insurance company have a uh voice in that? Do there, are there certain things they're looking for?
Uh, that's a good question. I will double check because we do have an audit every year. And as you know, we just went through that audit and I can go look and see a number of their risk management. Uh checklist items who really involve more specific trainings and practices. So as opposed to policies, practices of making sure there's smoke owners and carbon dioxide detectors and um. Exits are accessible and those types of things. I think there, if we said that we had legal review of it, I think that would satisfy most of their concerns. But it's a good point I will ask. No, I was trying to think of the other, uh there are, you know, a lot of other uh updates, the. Um but the good news is, it's just, I was such a relief to hear Streets is fully staffed, we're making progress in um the police department, obviously. And uh you know, I think we have some good applicants for the human resource position also. Fingers crossed. Thank you, other questions regarding HR? Okay, let's move on to animal shelter.
Caitlin, I see you up there. Everyone, yeah, I do have a foster mama and her kitten, so if you hear screaming, everything's okay. They're just jumping on my legs. Um so in the report here. You can see the intakes for the full year so far, um just in August, we did have forty-two animals come in. Twenty-two were from the county and twenty were from the city, so pretty close. But overall, we see we've had forty-five stray impounds from the city and seventy-three stray impounds from the county. Surrender wise in August, um the numbers brought our total for the year up to seventeen for both the city and the county. Uh let's see here. With our stray impounds so far, um just in August, sixty-two percent came from the county. And thirty-eight percent came from the city. We had collectively um. Sixty-five percent of the found animals for the year came from private citizens, so a total of ninety-two. Twenty percent from the PD, fifteen, or sorry, eleven percent from the SO, a brand in total of fifteen animals. And then seven animals were five percent brought in by the shelter staff. And thankfully, there was a typo on the second page, we had thirteen adoptions, not just three adoptions for August. And for our September and August um highlights, we did have the city-county work session, which went very well. And we had a lot of community members who showed up either in person or virtually. Our fence project is underway, so if you haven't been by the shelter recently, we do have new um. Metal fences that are going up, we had some chain-linked fence before. That was really old and and broken and needed to be repaired, so we now have some um awesome welded wire fencing outside. So we have a stray yard complete and we're working on finalizing the adoptable area out in the back. But you guys are welcome to stop by anytime and see in person. We did have all the stencils come in for the lobby, so that's gonna be a fun project that we're gonna open up to the public here in the next little bit. And we are still working on that historical reference log, so I am excited. We were able to find the binders for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. So we'll have a total of seven years of data completed when we have the historical reference log completed.
Questions for Ms. Cisco? I would just like to point out that there would have only been twelve adoptions this past month. Except for one of our own uh staff members adopted Ruby Pepper, no, is her name.
Mostly no.
So yes, thank you to Ms. Hewlett who uh got our numbers up for this month. Nice work. Any other questions for animal shelter? Caitlin, show us the kittens.
We can hear. Um I I understand that the fencing kind of. They weren't sure when it was gonna arrive and naturally it arrived at like a completely busy, stressful time. And they busted their, they just worked really hard to uh get the fencing installed. Um during an already busy time.
And and I'll stall for time on some other positive note. I think we uh addressed the animal shelter work session at the county. Then potentially a desperate need that the community has for more veterinarians. Wonderful thing is we were approached by a woman um who spoke at the meeting, after the meeting, she and her husband are both veterinarians. And uh they are looking to pursue having a mobile vet clinic in Letho. So we met with them and, you know, got some information and very positive, very positive meetings, so. Exciting weeks for us. Caitlin, did I buy you enough time?
I'm trying, but my camera is not pulling up. Sorry to disappoint, I'll keep working on it.
If you keep working on it, we can just see it on on Zoom.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to Debbie.
Hello. So um business licenses, we didn't have too many new applications this month, as you can see, we only had three. Um and nothing really to report there. Um the big thing is short-term rental licenses that I wanna talk about. Um Crystal Hewlett and I had a two-day training session with our current platform, which is beauty reps. Um that I really feel and I think she feels pretty was pretty invaluable as far as filling in some holes. As far as what we were missing or just basic application and how to use the software. Um however, we did find that there are some rebuilds that are necessary as far as updating information that's displayed on the portal. Um some of the debugging issues they still need to fix for us, so we're working with them to go forward with that. That's really my sole focus right now, is making sure that we have current code information on them for that to access. Um basically, just step-by-step guides for them to kind of walk through the process. I myself have created several test accounts on the backend, just so that I'm able to see both sides, just so that we are, you know, making sure of. Any disconnect kind of from that other perspective. Um so that's really what I've been focusing on. And then with our new partnership, which you'll see a resolution later this evening for Deckard Technologies. They are going to come in and hopefully sweep me off my feet and take care of all this wonderful compliance. Um but so that's what I'm hoping it'll feel like anyways. But so they're gonna come in and do, um and I asked one of the Deckard folks to be here this evening, but unfortunately, he had a prior obligation. Um but we do have um. Like a like a brochure that he sent me just right at the start of the meeting that I'd be happy to forward to council. It just kind of gives a little bit more of an overview of what they do. Um but so they basically have a dating mining process that is super top secret that um.
Oh kitten, kitten interaction.
But so, no, we're really excited about Deckard, just cuz they're gonna come in and um they basically have some kind of patent and can't tell us on how they do, what they're doing. But like Lori said, they're going to um dive back into the history, um help us pull some of that lost revenue. Go after what's missing, um and just really try and get our process streamlined and just a little bit um easier for other people. So hopefully, we're getting less and less folks falling into that non-compliance category. Um something else I really would like to do, um just kind of skipping ahead on that note. Since there's not a lot for new marijuana licenses, red liquor licenses, I'll give you an update on two mile in just a moment. But I really would like to, before the end of the year, do some sort of licensing workshop or hall or something like that. That is a just big piece of information for people going into short-term rental processes. Maybe do two separate ones, like one for people doing business licenses, one for people doing short-term rentals. That just kind of walks them through this process, because I feel that maybe in the past, there had not a lot of clear-cut, transparent communication. For a lot of these um permits and licensing that I process, so I just wanna make sure people know. Um I think that will help um remedy some of the issues that we're having. But so that's my goal, is hopefully by the end of the year, especially before renewal season comes up, is to do a couple of different workshops. That show people how to how to, you know, even the basic steps, like how to sign up through many reps. What do you do when you get to many reps? So you know, and then as far as the business license process goes, just more resources, kind of like I talked about some of my previous um reports. As far as what you have to do with the state, what you have to do with federal government actually before you really get to me. Um so those are just things that I'm working on as well, as far as I'm trying to roll those out by the end of the year. Um I just really want people to know what we're doing and understand why we're doing it. Hopefully, it'll be a little bit easier process for them with all of that.
I'm sorry, what? Could you repeat it? Because now we have three kittens. Efficiencies, our deputy city clerk is looking at some fantastic efficiencies and communication and transparency with our community about licensing. Back to the kittens.
Open to a city hall kitten.
Yes, for any licensing town hall we have, there will be kittens.
But I will take any questions, if you have any questions about Deckard or just kind of what we're aiming to do here by the end of the year.
I think those those workshops sound like a great idea, that's super awesome. Um I wonder with the SDR one too, if it could include like. The platforms people are working on, so whether it's Airbnb or BRBO or something else, like. What they might need to do in those platforms to make it work, like as far as fees and taxes and stuff, like. I think that type of coaching would be really helpful.
Sure, I also would like to, and I don't see him on, um but I'd like to reach out to Adam. With tourism, just cuz I know he'd be a great um resource to help spread that information as far as those town halls go.
Yeah.
Um especially just cuz a lot of that revenue also affects him, um but I just think it'd be nice to try and work together with. Few folks to check to really get the message out there.
And now back to the kittens channel.
Any other questions for Debbie Sturrock?
Very happy about it. I also love the thought of the workshops and maybe also reach out to um Chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That is all very exciting. Unless, if you're looking in the most recent packet, there is a planning department. I'm not, I just downloaded the one that was available when I was. So the updated packet does have a. The update, can you, can you share on your, can you let me share? Uh we we did, you know, I I have to say, Mr. LaChance did a fantastic job getting everything teed up before he left for vacation. And he was very apologetic that he didn't have time to actually draft a written planning department report. So we we took some liberties of putting a report in the packet for him and with that. Okay, with that, we're we're, it will appear on the screen as did the kittens.
That may be while I'm teaming this up.
This will be a great time to do segue to Mr. Planner One, Alex Williams.
Thank you so much, um in lieu of Chief Ben um preparing a report for the council tonight. Um suggest that I just come and give sort of an impromptu update about what we've been working on and what I've been working on in the office. This uh month is the beginning of my full-time uh weeks here at the city. I was part-time for May, June, July, August, and now I'm full-time and that's been a really great shift. It was um very wonderful for the city to make that concession with me so that I could transition that way from my, you know, personal jobs into this position. So um I think the first thing I'll start with is that.
Oh, there you go, there there's.
Um since I've started, we've had a lot of activity and a lot of um applicants come down the pipeline for certificates of appropriateness. Substantial for the historic preservation commission and it's been really great to work with those applicants and kind of work with their projects. And then doing some staff reports and we have a very stacked couple of weeks here. Andrew and I this morning actually were teasing out how the next uh two meetings might look. And we do have two projects each um meeting at minimum, um whether they're a work session or a public hearing. For instance, on nine twenty-four, I mean uh we have one twenty-one west and Ninth Street Garage Work Session. They're just looking to add a garage onto their property. And then we have a public hearing on that same meeting for the uh window, um maybe some roof. On renovation rehabilitations for the Manhattan Building, which is pretty exciting to begin to see that building get fixed up. And become significant again in our retail core. Um then moving on to the ten eight meeting, we do have another rehabilitation of a historic home over on one of eight East Eleventh. And that's a pretty great project, a firm out of Denver, who has actually a mayor's awards in that region for rehabilitation. Another house and then one of the historic districts in the country. But um we will go on to a work session for another garage on three three West Third. Um so I'm just thrilled to be able to work, create these um staff reports and memos and help, you know, prepare the commission. To make adequate decisions, so it's sound really great. I'm loving the fact that we have stuff built out in the future and pretty soon we're gonna be looking at next year as far as when we have slots for next on meetings. Then I do wanna say thanks so much for, you know, approving the development agreements. I already have someone I'm working with right now to potentially um come to council and request a work session. Um and that's really exciting, you know, for me, and um I was an architectural designer before this position. And I was trying my best in my own business to try and help the housing prices and, you know, just be more than that, an asset to, you know, folks just trying to make an addition to their home. For growing family or, you know, so on. And so it's really exciting to work with all these different projects and sort of help um see how we can help. Local people just create more housing. I will say with this development agreement on the applicant, I mainly spoke Spanish. I technically have a minor in Spanish, but I still feel pretty intent with my abilities, but we can get through it really well. Her broken English, my broken Spanish, were on, you know, we got to a point of understanding and she was very grateful. Um she actually, uh she was surprised to learn about this, but she um was actually kicked out of her employee housing in Copper Mountain. For after twenty-five years working in Copper Mountain, and so she's now into a housing situation here in Ledville. And we'll publicly approach the council for um something in the way of development agreements to increase the dwelling density on the lot. On for housing, so that's just super interesting and could not have been more timely. She literally came into our office the week after you all did. So I'll hear more from that. I will say on that regard, you may have to look into a translator that night to help her get her story across. And her request across, um I would not feel like my abilities would be up to that in front of the council. I can put her one-on-one and we can trade trade off on words as far as like how to get to a point of under-understanding. But I think for a formal presentation or request for a work session if you want would be great. And I did um inform her that probably looking in January or somewhere after your budget setting time period would be more appropriate. So she's very aware to that. She may come and request that work session before the next year, but just from the update on that. Um some of the other smaller things around the office have been really great. I love working with Sarah, um as all short-term rental. And the reason I say this is as far as um piggybacking on the short-term rental um conversation. The first step someone has to do to get a short-term rental is they have to approach me and the planning department to get a permit. There are a couple, these are little situations that wouldn't allow short-term rental. These are little situations that wouldn't allow short-term rental on a property and we also want to double check that now. Where are they putting this? Short-term rentals or parking for the short-term rental. There's a couple of things in the code that um, stipulates they have to come through first. And that's really great that I have an engagement to break them and start a file and pass them on to Sarah. And so we do education and I can probably have some, some. Um, likewise, I'm getting um, enough to take in sign permits. Um, pregnant for the retail board, but Sarah and I have also talked about this, that as we uh, sign up new businesses, it might be nice to get them some information. On sign permits because these businesses go right out and they try and open up their business and they want to put a sign up and they're just, they would miss an opportunity for education there. And they'd hate to them gain when they have a new business, you know, with some sort of citation from a community service officer just because they didn't know. And we didn't tell them. So that's something that um, has come up between you and Sarah as well as our, our still have overlapped. Um, what else did I have here? Um, and finally, uh, very exciting for me. I'm going to the American Tennis Association Colorado Chapter um, conference in. Loveland, Colorado at the very first weekend of October, the last three days of that week. Um, I'm looking very forward to, you know, little amounts of things and potentially putting something together for not only our staff. Um, for me, but maybe as council as well. It's finally, I'll say that I, what I've been up to is beginning to think of long ways to educate my public on planning initiatives. Um, Brianna Ortiz, um, goes together a newsletter now and I've taken the initiative to create sort of a. Uh, to develop and find a corner where I'm just trying to insert. So you think, things like, so you think you need a permit? Or did you know that we can answer your questions here? Or that, did you know that there are so many zones in cities? I'm trying to. Be proactive and so then people come to us that would be not interview confused and all like, hey, I've been thinking about this. I would like to move on now. Um, and that wraps up and I will talk to presentation on what um, I've been up to in the planning department.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Willis?
Uh, no, but a comment, uh, just, we're all aware legally in the state of Colorado, we do have to provide interpretation for these requests and so. Great.
And if you, if, if we know what that date, it means we do have a couple of um. A, a couple of resources where you could lean on, but it would be best to plan ahead.
Okay, you're welcome.
I've got one question, maybe now for council and Lori. Um, would it make sense at some point to think about including the certificates of appropriateness? On a consent agenda, because the HPC already goes through a public hearing process, at least for those who are in controversy, I would suggest.
Yes.
It's actually been. We'll probably need to make that just sort of an understanding and decision on, on council of what. We would like, what we feel comfortable receiving through the consent.
You can always call something.
And then everyone will just like stare daggers at you. Other comments or questions for Mr. Willis? Thank you. Okay, financial sales tax comparisons.
All right. I'll just start with some highlights and then what I can open there. Um, Colorado Trust. I um, transferred after the Lorian and I have met about the uh, amount of funds that we had in our general checking account. Um, we agreed on an amount to transfer over to Colorado Trust at seven hundred and fifty thousand. Um, with the money, make some money. Um, so I did invest that into the um. The plus account, which has a higher yield, um, just slightly. So. That investment now is a little more than a million dollars and year-to-date, we have earned um, just under sixty-eight thousand dollars in. Um, interest accounts. That's always exciting. Um, sixty-seven percent of the year has elapsed through August. Um, our revenues are down slightly. Um, I will be monitoring those closely over the coming months. Um, as we look at sales tax. Um, we have, we still see some property tax trickle in. It's not very much at this point. Um, we did receive the uh, severance tax. Um, I believe it was budgeted at three hundred thousand, but it comes, came in at um. I feel like between the severance tax and the uh. Mineral tax is around half of that. Um, so I'll be watching revenues closely. So we're down slightly. Um, expenditures for the year are, are tracking year-to-date right around sixty-seven percent. Um, and we're starting to see on the fire fund, those revenue will start to cut out. Um, with, we've gotten some, uh, the first installment and the second installment should be here shortly for the deployment. So we'll start to see those funds come in to offset those wages for the wealth land deployments. Um, August sales tax, I did not get the reports from the county until this morning and they were having issues getting um. Getting the reports from the state. There was something on the state's back end. So um, those were put in last minute. If you didn't have a chance to check those. On those August sales tax was um, four hundred and twenty-three thousand nine twenty-two, up ten percent from last year of the sales tax. So. It still don't think we'll quite hit the three point nine million, but again, I'll be watching closely to see what, how those numbers play out. Um, I'm predicting maybe around three point seven million. Um, and we'll go from there.
Just one thing to point out, I appreciate Ms. Yulet sending out the revised numbers. We're only down about eleven thousand dollars on sales tax revenue. So it is tracking that we hit a dip in the spring. We won't really see what happened this summer for, I think, another month or two. So those numbers are super important for the next couple of months to see. I think that will, I, I, I think I'm still cautiously optimistic. We'll get to three point nine, but it'll be the next couple of months that'll let us tell us if we get there.
Yeah, I mean, town has seemed to be busy, so. We'll see. She's an optimist and I'm, I'm, I'm a redness. Not much, a little accommodations tax we received in August. Um, you know, I am tracking those monthly, but again, we see the big payments quarterly. Um, still working on audit wrap-up with the auditor. She has been, has been waiting for the audit from the Laura. So that we can complete our audit, um, starting to get a little anxiety because those have to be filed with the state by September thirtieth. But it, that's the final wrap-up. Um, and I think she's down to the last, excuse me, the last little bit, so we should have those filed. Um, no problem. Still working with clerk of um, on the budget book. Once we get budget numbers, then we'll start building that out in their portal. Um, and I think that is about all I have at this time.
Thank you. Questions? Does everybody just want to pay some bills?
No.
Let's do it. Thank you, Crystal. Uh, this is, uh, this is kind of a long stretch of bills. All the way from July through now.
Caving is expensive.
Caving is so expensive.
After around three forty.
Yeah. And it makes us look at our, our two hundred thousand dollar ass mouth, but it'd be like. That's cute. Uh, questions or comments before paying said bills? Which Cisco and I have already signed off.
Third seconds.
All in favor?
Uh.
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think anyone is opposed to pay the bills that have already been paid. All right, let's take some action. That will last. There's a temporary use permit for the Homecoming Parade. Mr. Cummings, you have to give us just a brief background on this.
Yeah, um, so the Homecoming Parade has been a pretty stable um. Event that has been in Level and pretty much everywhere. For a very long time. Um, this event has not changed. Um, it has changed hands of who is uh, been running it. Um, and Ms. Riggs is here if there is any questions. Um, I, I do believe it's, it's very straightforward. Uh, I do have all of the signatures I need. To um, put it in front of you. And I see no issue with this. Um. This Homecoming Parade in the past has had one of those three-year permits. Um, with taking over this permit position, it has come to my attention that those three-year permits are. Something we should definitely stay away from. And moving forward, it is my goal, especially with parades in general, to be working on a new system that is. Probably not for this, the rest of this year, but um, possibly a new ordinance. Changing the way we run parades here in our city. Uh, to make it easier for everyone, including our school district, including, you know, every, everyone. Uh, but this one is. Very straightforward and it's, it's like, it's going to be a great time.
Great.
But we do have Ms. Riggs here. Does anyone have questions or clarifications desired on the Homecoming Parade? The date is September twenty-sixth, correct?
You're correct.
How many floats are you anticipating in this parade, Ms. Riggs?
Um, so currently we have planned, um, there's five floats that are going to be involved. Um, I'm still working with elementary school and the intermediate school to see if they have. Um, any groups who are going to be walking. We'll also have several um, sports teams. And other clubs that might be walking as well, but we have five planned floats for um. The grade level, seven, eight is going to have a combined float for the first time. Um, we're trying that out for them to see how that goes and. Nine through twelve, um, each will have their own float um, as well.
Hope for good weather.
And I will say the kids I directed, our student senators, um. Let's see, yesterday during their meeting to plan their floats so that they have um, very good. Uh, floats that um, express our theme. Our theme this year is Disney Pixar for our floats. So. Um, they were all very jazzed about um, coming up with those plans and what they were going to put on their floats and stuff. And it was really cool to see them get excited about that yesterday, so.
And I understand we would have had uh, some of them here tonight, but all of them are on the volleyball team?
Not all of them are on the volleyball team. Several of them are. And some of them are working and so hopefully the next time we need to come, I will have some student representatives to. Participate in city council meetings. I think it's an important thing for them to be a part of and see how it works and. Unfortunately, we just weren't able to make it happen today, but hopefully in the future.
Just everyone is busy on every level. Okay, thank you. Are there other questions for Ms. Riggs or for your comments? And I would entertain a motion.
There moves to approve temporary use permit for Lake County High School Student Senate to host the annual Lake County SD one Homecoming Parade. On Thursday, September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, from four P M. to four forty-five P M. along Harrison Avenue from Ninth Street to Thirteenth Street.
Um, no, that's ours.
Roll call please. Councilmember Thomas, yes. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Dar, yes. Councilmember Lila?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Green?
Yes.
Great. Well, we'll look forward to that. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Let's move on to the temporary use permit for Main Street, Second Creek Street. In that. Yes, sir.
I have a public comment on this.
Yes, please go ahead.
Um. It says here, the findings, the useful not adversely affect public health, safety or welfare. And then the conditions. I would like to see an additional condition there that um, dark chocolate not be handed out at this time.
Are you speaking about the trick-or-treats street?
Yes.
Okay. No doubt.
Because um, it, it, it ends up on the sidewalk sometimes in the streets. And then it's got this taxi with the dog. So this would be adversely affected safety and welfare and health of dogs. Thank you.
Uh, so once again, this is an event that has been taking place here in Level for a very long time. Um. We do have our representative of the main street over here. Uh, if you have any questions, been patiently waiting. I appreciate that. Um. Again, not much has changed. Um, in the past, this event has uh, tried doing a partial closer, closure of the road. And um, it was uh, both the, the main street um, and the city's. I- interpretation that that was not ideal for the safety of the participants of the event. So um. This will, I believe it's the third year that we'd have a full closure. Uh, and we definitely, uh, staff supports that. Uh, speaking with Tony as well, he supports that. Um, we have everything uh, worked out, I believe, as far as um. Using the same uh, road closures as we did for boom days, uh, though of course it's not a three-day event. This is just a few hours in the evening. Um, but we still want that full uh, detour. Um, yeah, uh, do you have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Cummings? I want to thank you guys very much for being present here tonight. So I'm, I. So I will just assume that, that you've heard the concern about dark chocolate being present at the event. So when you're purchasing candy, please keep that in mind. Also, if you have any dark chocolate and that comes with the packs and you need a place to bring it.
I, I apologize. I.
No, I think this is a much-loved event. I am, I'm hoping for slightly better weather this year. We are.
Yeah. It was epic last year, right?
But it was so, I mean, you know, there was so much snow at first and people were just like. Yeah, we're doing it anyway. I mean, it was just, it was fantastic. The, the uh, the energy, it was wonderful. Uh, are there questions for the Main Street team or for County Rec? All right then. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve temporary use permit for Lake County Recreation and Leadville Main Street Program. It was trick-or-treat on Main Street from one to three P M. Sunday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, including requested closure of Harrison Avenue from noon to four P M. Maybe attach findings and conditions.
Third sentence.
Roll call please. Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Lila?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas, yes. Mayor Green, yes. And Mayor Pro Tem Dar?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Actually, I didn't see those. The consent agenda, I guess, I'm going to start to be my costume together. This week. Last year I wore the Viking hat, I'm forty, I don't know, this year. Uh, let's move on. Uh, resolution number forty-four was already uh, covered in the consent agenda. So let's move on to resolution. Number forty-five. Um, this is a resolution approving a master services agreement. Uh, with Deckard Technologies for short-term rental monitoring services. Um, Ms. Simonson, let's give us a little run-through.
I actually will hand this over to our deputy city clerk.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that on the. Thank you, Sarah.
Those are right. Um, good evening, council and Mayor Green. So we are hoping um, after this evening to enter into a contract with Deckard Technologies for our short-term rental. Monitoring of clients. Um, we're, I'm all looking very much forward to this. Um, to get our short-term rentals under, under cap, unintended. Um. And so basically, um, as far as background information, um, I did mention I'm going to send you a separate email that I just received tonight. That I just received tonight from Deckard that has a nice overview of all of their offerings and more specifically on the options that we have chosen. Um just so you can kind of have a better look at this, at the details. Um it does include the information on the fiscal impact of this cost. It is an annual cost. Of um approximately eight thousand dollars, and that includes the software and the actual outreach campaign where they will contact. Our noncompliant folks, and that's everyone that we know about and that we don't know about. So basically, people that, you know, we know about that are either not on compliance for taxes or just haven't paid something or maybe have some other form. Or having had a fire inspection, something like that, and then all of the people that are renting without our knowledge. Um and so we're gonna go for all of it. Um and then basically, the other big thing I wanted to point out is um there is a provision that allows us to terminate under certain conditions. Um and basically outlines that Deckard's responsible for the data security and compliance. Um and it is our recommendation that we approve this resolution just so we can. Finally take charge of our short term rental situation. There is in a proposed, excuse me, there is a proposed motion in the staff report for it.
I got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Um. Same thing we reviewed sometime ago in consideration to fully switch to this. I was just sad. Uh and then the. If we, if someone was renting without our knowledge beforehand. Um do they still be uh? Having to pay the tax for the accommodation tax? Even if they were technically licensed?
That's the impression. It's.
Yeah, I think that's, if I understand your question correctly, that's the purpose of Deckard Technologies is what. My understanding was is in the presentation was that if that. Listing was anywhere, they have proprietary technology that will identify that and let us know. And the question was, we were asking. How far back can that go? Can we go back to when? So we we don't need to go out forever. We just need to go back to when we started the system.
Right.
And so, yes, they would be able to see and then help us with contacting those. Owners and hoping to recoup the taxes that we didn't receive. So that's something.
So it's regardless of permitting. That was more so my question. And I'm assuming on top of that, we'll also probably give them a note, so they have to be permitted.
Correct. My understanding is somehow, and I, like I said, I thought this was a possibility, that they they. Scour open source information to come to the conclusion that there are certain properties that have been noncompliant. Yes.
Sounds great.
In the annual speed. Multiple years from now back to when we first asked the. Right, yeah, so it would be what we want this right now is looking backwards to twenty twenty two when we started it. And then every year then going forward. So it doesn't limit us just to that year. It's the service which includes their whole data. Okay, very good. Yep. Is it ever they do? Yeah, and I just wanted to thank our deputy city clerk, Ms. Bushman, for her work on this because. When we were looking at entirely switching our short term rental software platform. You you know, I think we we took a step back and and as Bushman did some more analysis and realized that. Maybe we can stick with our current platform that is the customer spacing uh portion of the software and stick with. Google S slash many revs for that portion, and that's the training that she and Ms. Hula did that, you know, we're tweaking that to see if. See if that current software system works, so we don't have to switch all the property owners to a different system. We're just gonna switch on. Well, add on the backend this compliance. If we find many res go up, Google S is still being difficult. We and. Deckard Technologies has been fantastic on the compliance side. We could look at switching um completely, but we, that was the one sort of like, oh, you know, we can switch things on the backside if they don't work out great. But if you switch everything to all the property owners, then that's that's a heavy left and a lot of work internally for us to handle different. Uh to handle everybody through a different. Platform, so.
Doesn't work out.
Exactly. So this was the, this was the idea, it was Bushman's idea, said, let's try the compliance package. And let's see how that goes and see if many res will address some of the issues that we've identified in. So so far, that plan is working.
Really want this to be. A benefit for our citizens. I think everybody sees that and wants that, and I'm really. Didn't want to deter people further by throwing a whole new platform in the switch over um right at this time. So. Uh we're excited to move forward with Deckard. They've been really responsive. Um just following up with us and asking us if we need anything. Um. And so if you all do have. Further questions, um they are willing to come and do like a more detailed presentation if you want any more specifics about the data mining or just some of that. Um they're very um willing to work with us. They're excited to have us as one of their. Um clients.
Um thank you. Yeah, I'm excited for that. Uh. Do they have any sort of built in appeal process or? Do we need to? Figure something out internally, like if their records show noncompliance, like what process then do you? If if a permit holder disagreed and wanted to appeal that, how does that look?
So. Appeal the the uh so the the appeal process for denial of a business license or revocation of your business license. Because it's considered a property interest, we do uh uh provide appeal rights for that. I mean, I essentially what happens is if they, we say we've gone back and Deckard's records indicate you owe us five thousand dollars. And they say, we're not paying it. We can go through the compliance process and then take them to court, and their appeal process is through the court system to say. We do not believe we owe that money, and we say we do believe you owe that money. When you get to the license is when we have an internal appeal process. If we say you owe us taxes, we're not gonna re- renew your license. They would have an appeal process for. Denial or revocation of a license.
Okay. Great, thank you. And then. Uh one other question, um. Can you clarify? So if if a. Property or permit holder is found out of compliance. Do they then Deckard tells the city and they and the permit holder would hear from the city or would they hear directly from Deckard?
Great question. So we're working with Deckard basically this to. Write craft like a templated verbiage form. Deckard will do the actual outreach themselves. I mean, I, along with our staff and legal team, will obviously will have. An appropriate letter that is going to be sent on behalf of the city.
Okay.
But as far as the actual sending of it, it is all Deckard. Um they are the ones who are going out and finding the noncompliant people. And then putting this information together and reaching out to them based on what their noncompliance is. And so. That's actually something, that's my next step, and what I'm doing right now is. A noncompliant letter for taxes, a noncompliant letter for the annual business license, a noncompliant letter for. You've never come to us all for a short terminal license, so there's gonna be different categories, basically. And then Deckard will send those out based on what is your compliance, so.
You think, and and I think you pretty much answered my question, but do you think? Is is there any precommunication needed with permit holders like? That this system is happening, or do you think? Like the the letters will explain it when you get it?
My hope is that the letter will be worded well enough that it's not just a straight accusation. So much, because like we've talked about, there has been some of this disconnect and there's been these bugging issues on the platform. And so that's the other big thing I want to be sure of is, again, I don't want to scare people off. I don't want to deter you, so we want to be sure of a lot of what we're doing ahead of time. Um and so for me, it's more just gonna be about the most appropriate communication, because I do want people to have a chance to come back and say. You know, why don't I have it anymore? I sold it however many years ago or something like that, so there will be conversations for sure, um just because. I'm worried that there's been test accounts created, for example, like mine um from past. Um employees or things like that that are still living in there, and then those from, just for an example, like I found several of those the other day. Our data is showing those is not compliant. And those people haven't paid taxes, and I'm like, okay, well, they're not real accounts. They're not gonna pay taxes, and so. Um there's just little bits like that, and I really want to be sure of diving into before we're getting into the, we're going to court. Stages. Um so I do have um. Ms. Ortiz in the next newsletter, um just gonna have a small blurb. And then hopefully by then I'll also have a date for a workshop that I'd like to also host. I think for me, um short term rentals will be the one I'd like to first. Just because that's the biggest project, um I think where I'll get the most. Um input. For sure, and with the rules coming, I really want to just make sure that's taken care of, so.
Thank you. Yeah, it does for sure. Thank you. And one one other, will it be, will Deckard be able to look at commercial lodging? As well, because that's also. Contributing accommodations tax. Money.
That's a good question, because uh those lodging establishments are not considered short term rentals, but we can clarify they. If that was their exact definition, but it's those lodging establishments are. Paying accommodations tax, but they're not short term rentals.
They're not.
Yeah.
If, I mean, if they have their listings on. For example, VRV or Airbnb or something, then that would obviously be part of the data point, but I don't know how that would factor like. You said administrative side, it's insane, just with the overall tax information.
We'll clarify that. Yes, thank you for bringing that to her. Any other questions? I'm really excited about this. Um I was really. Was really impressed with their entire platform, but I agree, like taking the whole thing on at once would make a tremendous amount of. Work, especially for our deputy city clerk dealing with the front end stuff, when right now the pressing issue is the compliance part. And so thank you for suggesting that we sort of dial down on that one, you should.
Thank you.
Steve, did you want to make a comment? Did I see your hand up or?
No, I agree with you. Right now the pressing issue is the compliance thing. I'm writing a note down there.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
Councilmember Luna Lev to approve Resolution number forty five, series of twenty twenty four, resolutions to approve a. Master service agreement with Deckard Technologies for short term rental monitoring services.
Uh seconds. Roll call please. Mayor Green, yes. Mayor Pro Ten Thar?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Um Councilmember Thomas, yes. And Councilmember Lila Liam?
Uh yes.
Well, thank you very much.
Test. All right, let us now move on to Resolution forty six.
Just press the break.
Oh, it is eight. I'm sorry, I missed my eight o'clock cutoff. Please, let's take a five minute break, because that's what you get. Okay. Uh somebody help reorient me. We were on Resolution forty six?
Yes.
Yes.
This is the resolution uh regarding our enterprise enterprise fleet agreement this time. This Simonson. Okay, look, so this uh is a number of agreements, that master agreements we would enter into with enterprise fleet management. And uh they essentially set the stage for us to uh work with enterprise for fleet management. You had a presentation from. Uh Ms. Boyd and uh I can't remember Daniel's last name right now, uh but. Ms. Boyd is actually here to, in case you have any last minute questions, but what does these agreements do is set up the relationship? And then we attached in the packet the um potential cost spreadsheet of replacing the most urgently needed vehicles. So what will happen is. Um Ms. Boyd is working with what's vehicles are available and what's the priority needs for the different departments to let us know what can we do in twenty twenty four? And then we'll look at what budget we have, and then we'll look at what can come in twenty twenty five, but these agreements are necessary to set up the relationship. Just one last note is, I really appreciate Ms. Boyd working with our uh city attorney to iron out all those questions we had on the agreements. There was one, we circulated uh updated packet to you. The only change in those agreements that came in the updated packet today. Is if there's litigation, the choice of venue is now Colorado uh instead of the headquarters of. Enterprise, which we always like to have litigation occur in Colorado, so we don't have to travel someplace else because the tiny itty bitty change. So that was the updated contracts you received today. We're just so excited to get this before you. Uh we have an urgent need to get rid of some vehicles that are. Uh high cost maintenance vehicles and get new vehicles, especially for the police department with new officers coming on and. Just constantly getting emails of questions of vehicles in a shop and it needs this much X and repairs, what should we do? Uh hopefully this will save us. Uh money going into twenty twenty five, and so, like I said, Marcela Boyd is here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If I cannot, I will ask her to answer. Um I would just say the. The packet on the web is still the old packet. I don't see the updated.
We got an email.
Oh, no, but I held that link and it took me to the old packet.
Four three three one?
That should be the new.
I know I'm always showing myself to be like the old person who can't do the technology.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got four three three one, but like, you know, there's the planning department isn't there, and then my.
Really?
Yeah.
First three three one.
Doesn't have it on there for me, and it didn't have, does yours? Okay, we'll get to it when we get there, but um anyway.
I don't understand that.
Well, just knowing that in this, that that particular update of the packet was very nominal. It would change the word. I don't remember where their headquarters is. Minnesota to Colorado is the only change in those updated agreements. That's super. So if this is, if we implement this, then. The timeline kind of depends on what. Ms. Boyd is able to to find and. Correct. And replace for us. She's been corresponding with uh police department on the availability of some vehicles that would potentially be, we'd be able to get this year. And so uh they are Durangos. For the police officers and then the issue is, can we acquire the vehicles available? Can we acquire them and how quickly can we get them? Uh outfitted, that's my word, but it it looks like there's potential for that to happen soon, which is fantastic, because. Sometimes again, just getting the vehicles, so Tahos apparently are were popular. They're not available, so we switched to Durangos. And then, of course, there's a wait period to have them equipped. Yeah. And so it looks like it's possible to get the vehicles pretty quickly, white ones. White Durangos and then maybe even get them equipped pretty quickly, so that would be fantastic if we could see those vehicles. Within the next couple of months. I don't even know if that's a possibility, uh but that, and then looking at the other priority vehicles, animal shelter. City hall, um street department service truck. Yeah. You get people out of their person, yeah. Are there questions on this master service agreement and resolution?
Um the uh. Random. Five says uh we are agreeing to pay all the costs. In using these things um. Uh this tow charge thing is there. Is that incorporated here? Remember you talked about that? In case they need to be towed, it's a six hundred or seven hundred dollar fee now. It's not no longer two hundred about that. You know what I'm saying? So that would be, we might, i- is there a way we can get triple A to cover the the ci- the city or, you know?
I, so we are also not just entering into the equity and lease agreements, but they also have the maintenance management, and so. Let me see if Ms. Boyd is able to answer that question on that. Uh if we're, if as part of the maintenance management, we are, that includes tow.
Yes, so on the maintenance management, toes will be included um as a pass through cost to the city. So. Any tow that were to happen, we would help, we could help source and whatnot, and whatever charge that tow was would go directly to the city. But we could help oversee all of it. But we could help oversee all of it and, and things of that nature. That's the question.
Are there other questions for, or regarding this resolution? Okay, and I would entertain a motion, please.
There moves to approve resolution number forty-six, series of twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Leadville. Authorizing a master equity lease agreement, addendum to master equity lease agreement, maintenance management and fleet rental agreement. With enterprise fleet management.
Thomas Senns. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Thomas, yes. Councilmember Little Liam.
Yes.
Mayor Green.
Yes.
Mayor Proten Thar.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, right, moving right on down. We have resolution number forty-seven, um, this is all me. And us, um, regarding, uh, a, a process by which we, the organizations may. Request funding, and I just want to check before we get going, because apparently I am apoplectic in the face of technology. I did not see the proposed form added on, so I emailed it off to you, but did you see?
It is.
What is going on? So, if I email again, I don't know.
Somehow I did then issue you a boomer's laptop.
Well, did you see him look at me today when I told him I couldn't get my printer to connect?
Oh, I did.
And he was like, I'll add it. Okay, so as, um, as we had discussed, um, at, at length before. We desire to come up with some sort of process by which we could maybe measure and weigh. Uh, more, more fairly or more equally different requests that come to the city for funding. Um, rather than just taking it first come, first served. Um, I will say that. In writing this resolution, and, and thank you to Ms. Simonson for helping me out with this, but what I was trying to do. Was give us the flexibility to year by year to designate how much. If any money we wanted to put into, uh, typically it comes out of our operating contingency budget for. Community funding requests in addition to what we normally give to Lake County Community Fund. Um, just, uh, I just wanna give you a little background of some of the discussions I had, so I spoke with. Don Mercury, first of all, um, a- and he said it would be a matter of fairly simple mathematics. If, say, an organization received funding from Lake County Community Fund to determine. What would have been like the city contribution, the city buy-in in that funding, I mean, literally, it's like a two-step math. So that was not, that was not going to be, uh, you know, a big issue. Um, I spoke with a number of people from different nonprofits and got some feedback that, A. The funding from LCCF is, is rarely, if ever sufficient for what their needs are. Um, and there was some concern about their grant, um, program. Maybe not prioritizing Leadville Lake County central organizations, so. For example, somebody used the, the example of Outward Bound, which is a much larger organization. Um, and, you know, would, would that have, while that, that is, there is a base here. And that does provide something to the community, like, does that deserve the same amount of funding as, say, something that really only. Is born, bred, and active within Lake County. Um, that was one example that was given to me of, of. Why some nonprofits are, uh, are not completely happy with how the grant program through LCCF works. Everyone that I spoke with was very understanding that, you know, i- in the past, we had, first we had funding. First, we had no money, and we didn't give any money out, and then starting in twenty twenty, we started giving nine thousand dollars a year to LCCF. We had been playing around with a few thousand dollars prior to that time, that would go to small things. Um, I actually grew up and went through our past budgets, and so just to give you an idea. Uh, you know, like in two thousand and seventeen, we gave some money to the Chamber slash Visitor Center, and we gave. Some money to the Tabor Opera House, which the city had recently acquired, and that was kind of it. We had some in-kind with LCCF, because they, we let them print their, their things here. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, that really started to expand. We gave money to the senior center for their, uh, their, their deck. We gave money to Main Street, to the EDC, Right Start, the Advocates, in small amounts, in the order of like two to three thousand dollars. And then that's just progressively grown from there, both including, you know, just a broader, you know, these one pine. Leadville Music came in one year and wanted fifteen hundred dollars to get a project started, so that they would start having concerts at, at Zane's Park. Um, and then COVID happened, and we got all these COVID relief funds, so we had a tremendous amount of money through ARPA, and we're able to just give. These going from two thousand dollars to twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars to some of our local nonprofits. Following that, we had this bizarre sales tax revenue, uh. Haymaking year last year, so, al- although we still had, we're having out some ARPA money, we also just have this tremendous. Um, like, I think we were hitting, like, we hit our city budget, like, just shortly after August, and everything after that was candy. And we already had this really robust reserve, and so I remember Mayor Lobby talking about how, like, it's, like. We, we have too much reserve to begin with, like, we need to quit, stop piling money, uh, for. Uh, i- and while we have all of this need in our community, and so, a lot of that, we were, again, able to make these. You know, tens of thousands of dollars. I think we already calculated, we gave just about half a million dollars out that year to community organizations. Um, obviously, this has not been a haymaking year, as, as far as taxes, we, we ramped up our salaries. We've done things to sort of, you know, additionally use some of that increased money, which leaves us with even less for. Um, giving back to our community. So as part of that, what, uh, after tho- those interviews. Um, what I pro- what I'm proposing is that we set up, uh, uh. Twice a year, and just judging by when requests have come to us, so, for example, in the last month and a half, we've received about four hundred thousand dollars. Of requests from various community organizations. That's because those larger organizations are doing their budgets also, as are we. Um, so what I was, what I'm gonna propose is that we have a period where you can submit a request for funding, and the deadline is March thirtieth. March thirty-first, and then for the second round, September thirtieth. That as the, at the end of our, uh, when we finish our budget, whenever we decide that year to, or next year. To getting to operating contingency for community organization requests that we divided up half and half, and we see. What comes down the pipe by March thirty-first, we spend the next month as a council deciding. Are we gonna meet these requests, or are we gonna divvy them up, or are we gonna say, eh, maybe not to you, but yes, to you, depending on their, their applications? And if there is money left over after that first round, that we just kind of walk it into what's available for the second round. Um, because I, i- in my experience so far, really the larger requests do come in the second, in, in the latter half of the year. Um, so, this resolution says we ha- we were, we're setting out these two periods. Where there's a deadline, you can submit your, your request over the next month, the council will make a decision, and then we will cut a check. And, um, and I put in the proposed form. Um, I did build off of that form that we got from the Beckett, Town Beckett, and their grant program. I was using the feedback I got from some of the nonprofits about a desire for, you know, like, since we're not really doing a grant program. Do we really need all of this financial breakdown information? I was really just trying to dial into these questions that would be useful to us. What is the benefit to the community? What's this, what does your organization do? You know, like, what groups do you serve? Um, and so this, this is my proposed form, uh, I'd really like some feedback, it, the, since the resolution doesn't. Really include the form itself, this is something we would update every year with the, their amount available. Um, and make available to community organizations who came in for a buck, we just hand them this form and say, bring it back by. Either March thirty-first or September thirty. So.
The only, uh, well, I guess I'll circle it, but, um, I think this is great, this is really well put together, and. Uh, it's exciting to see it, I don't know, I don't know, they will use it, but definitely so exciting to see, um. And I think this definitely addresses the concern that I had. Um, and I'm glad you spoke to us nonprofits, I'm sure gave you a little bit more insight as to what concerns I had. Um, regarding it all, just going to the community fund. Um, I will say, in my experience with this type of work, it is very helpful. Not so much for the applicant, but more so for council to have a question about, um. Uh, how it relates to our goal or our mission, um. Just, it just allows to circle back on it, and I didn't know, maybe I missed it, but I didn't know that I saw that on there.
I'm not sure it's phrased exactly like that, but I'm absolutely open to, so especially some of the narrative questions. If you feel like one should be phrased a little bit differently, I have described the proposed project, how it will benefit the community. What's the mission of your organization, and what populations does this serve? Uh, maybe we could add on to that, how does this project align with your mission?
With our.
With.
Specifically. The city, the city mission, that's all.
So I should include priorities, maybe, like strategic priorities?
Yeah.
So maybe we should include a little summary of the, the city's mission, vision, strategic priorities, how does your. How does your project align with this?
And I feel like that gets like a little bit more, like. Gives council the ability to reflect on that when we're considering these decisions. Um, that's just really good practice, generally speaking, to have that be a part of your operation. Um, because sometimes we get lost in these exciting, you know, I have exciting requests that, we're like, oh, yeah, this is great, and then. You know, circle back to mission, how, how great is it compared to what we, what our mission is and what our priorities are? And, and I'm sure that can change, uh, year to year in terms of at least how it's interpreted and what the need is at the time, but. I think that's really important.
I, I think that's an excellent insight. I will add that as a question. Um, thank you, that's great feedback.
I personally would also like to see a report out from whoever the recipient is to talk about. How they did spend the money. I know we're asking them how money will be used, but how many did they actually use the money, what impact? Which I think would help council for future requests coming from the same organization.
So like an end-of-year report?
An end-of-year or closure grant, and it doesn't, I'm not trying to have any complex or a spreadsheet or anything, just some simple narrative. This is what we did, this is who it helped, or who it impacted.
Having gone through this personally, in my own regard with the county, I would say. The only caution I have around that is I don't want us to plonk a hole where we're like, hey, let's ask for this data. Like this very rudimentary data, and then in the future, meeting, say, hey, actually, can we get more in-depth data on that? Cause it, it leaves so a lot of work for individuals like me who are running those programs, I just. Careful not to fall into that trap and be pretty upfront about, like, what data might be important to collect. Um, I don't know that we're dealing with that much amount of money in this case, but this.
I mean, traditionally, in the last few years, outside of those extra ARPA funds and extra sales tax funds. We have had approximately twenty grand.
Yeah.
So it's not, um, I, and one of the things, the feedback that I got was like, some of the other grant applications are. From my own experience, some of the other grant applications were really pretty tedious, so I was really trying to keep it simple. Nevertheless, um, what would you think about, like, just sticking, uh, you know, an additional sheet on the back and just say. You know, by the end of the year, please provide council with. You know.
An impact statement.
An impact statement.
And I'd say the success stories, something simple.
So would, so would we still envision giving money to the community fund in addition to this? Or would the community fund come to us and request a grant with this form, or will we just take that on? I mean, in that, and I would just say, some last four years, we have done both. We have given a s- a set amount to Lake County Community Fund. Now, last year, we had a lot more, we gave additional money for Lake County Community Fund. And then we kept some, you know, to, to administer ourselves. Whether that was initially the intent or not, it's just kind of what happened, um, because I don't think we really ever had this idea of. Doing things separate, really. I do think that there's enough. I do think that there's enough, A, need in the community, benefit from diverse funding sources, and. These small, you know, weird asks that don't really fit in the community funds, um, grant program. Um, that I would like to have some funds available for, and I think that is where this, like, let's take all the applications and see. And if it is, say, a nonprofit who is getting stuff from the community fund, and then we have these smaller, just sort of quirky things, like. Can we, can you help us pay for this? Uh, the CMC student, you know, convince them to buy school musical, that sort of thing, that we can actually choose to prioritize those. Um, so I, I would, personally, I would like to keep doing both, because I think they serve different purposes in, in the end. Maybe it depends on how much funding we have to give out, and that I just wanted to leave open, so that we decided every year, like, this coming budget year. You know, I don't know, maybe it'll be five thousand bucks, I just don't know.
Yeah, I think that's, that's important to keep, this, this is evergreen, like, you can change it here. And I think that's the very important part of this process.
So two deadlines throughout the year, do we anticipate, um, providing grants? I can't remember the date now, March, can we have to half of our agreed-upon budget? Or could we spend all of our budget in March, and then the people that we're gonna submit by September, we say, oh, sorry, I missed that. So what I'm gonna, what I'm proposing to kind of avoid that is split it up half and half.
Okay.
It's looking over historically, we seem to get the smaller asks early in the year, and then a mix and larger asks in the end of the year. Um, so if we split it up half and half, and we use that first half, right? Maybe you can ask again in September, if we didn't get to you, um, or if there's money left over. Then we would just increase the amount available in the September deadline.
That makes sense.
So we'd never spend more than half with the March deadline.
Right.
Yeah, I like the idea.
Um, who will administer this?
So what I'm putting in the application is that at least the applications would go to Ms. Bushman, but all that I would be asking her to do is just like. Make, you know, like, pass them on to me, make a stack, and then we can decide, like, if we wanna. Uh, what I would propose is that as of the deadline, we disperse all of the applications we've received. And then at the next city council meeting, the reason why I said we'll pay over a month is to give us a little bit of flexibility over which council meeting. To consider and discuss, and then make decisions in public like that, and then I can direct, uh, finance to cut a check.
Excellent.
So, so, so there, my, my intent is to give you no extra work, but I needed there to be like one destination for friends to go.
If, if applicants have questions about the application or asking for, who could field those?
I would say me.
Or I'm sure the pastor, council.
Or their, or their council, but they weren't, they weren't, I think that's actually a better idea.
Oh, sounds good.
I was just wondering what the impact on staff capacity would be, and that.
I'm trying to, to have virtually no impact on staff, they have enough to do.
And then my other question is, would this? would this, would like the Tabor Foundation be applying to this or?
No. So the Tabor is a city property and we, um, so our operating contingency budget covers a whole lot of things. So early on, the table was just sort of this, you know, year by year. At some point it became its own line item. And we just put that in there.
Gotcha.
I think Main Street, we would include that as well, because Main Street has been a a spinoff city department. And those are the only two that, you know, we've had requests from other entities to make them a line item on their budget. And I, that is a horrible idea. But because we have ties to those two particular entities, we've made that.
And so the other example, you know, like back in the day before we had a regional housing authority, Build a Generation was forming its housing coalition. And we actually gave money to pay the housing coalition coordinator. And then from that stemmed the policy action coalition. And then eventually this regional housing authority. So there are some things that sort of begin there and then they launch into their, they, they grow up and they launch into their own thing.
Okay. Well, yeah, I feel good about this and worth giving it a try. I feel like, um, yeah, it seems like we're due for like trying something new.
Um, I think it might be nice to provide a very general guideline, like grants typically do not exceed three thousand dollars unless there's a compelling interest.
Would, um,
I don't know what the number is.
Yeah, and I'm kind of wondering, y- you know, like I know in the past, we've discussed like maybe two thousand dollars. Um, I also, the reason why I just sort of didn't put in a hard number there is because like I, I don't even know what this budget year is gonna yield.
I think, yeah, sorry.
No, I just don't know with this budget.
Um, I, I think that's, I I think just having what our limitation is, uh, that's cycle will give enough of a heads up of like, okay.
And I totally forgot. I had it in the first year and then somehow left it out. But like for fiscal year twenty twenty four, um, I, I was gonna put a line up here, but it didn't now, available funds. Um, and so for, since we're in the latter half of the year, our available funds are eight thousand dollars right now.
Yeah, I think that would be useful, just to let people know if it's worth their time and effort.
So when we feel the twenty twenty five, we'll, I'll have first cycle, so, you know, first cycle, second cycle, and then we can or just, you know, then we can update the second cycle.
Are you envisioning trying for a round of this for October?
Yes, because I currently have several outstanding requests and Lori and I have been saying, please wait. We're coming up with a new process. So I'm gonna push this out to J P Housing Trust, State George's, um, what's?
Uh, Childcare Coalition.
Childcare Coalition.
Oh, and
And advocates. You know, so.
Who asked for three hundred thousand, right?
Correct.
Eight thousand and nine.
I think, you know, the bottom line is that this is a very different situation than we have had over the last two or three years. So
Yeah.
Um, I, I think there will be a great deal of disappointment, but we also like, we have to we have to look at our day-to-day city operations and our depart, you know, our service departments first. You know, this is, this is icing on the cake. It makes us all feel good, but it cannot be our, it cannot be part of, it cannot be a service department in and of itself.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, I think what I would like to do then, because I, the, the form itself, I think can change and flex, um, I will take, uh, your feedback, modify this form. I will push out an updated version to you, um, and and I will just plan on pushing that out to our organizations for this year. And then if we want to make formal adaptations for twenty twenty five, um, we'll, we'll do it during the budget season, sea, season. Thank you all for listening to me blather, um. There are other questions? And I would add a motion. I don't, did I put a motion in there?
Yeah.
Oh, God. I thought of everything almost.
I'm going to do a pre resolution number forty seven, series of twenty twenty four. The resolution of the city council of the city of Levell establishing a process for community organization funding requests.
On a seconds. Roll call please. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Thar.
Yep.
Councilmember in Little Now.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas, yes. Councilmember Hill.
Yes.
Mayor Green, yes. Thank you. Thank you all so very much. I'm really excited to try, to try this. Try this one out. Um, let's move on to our last action item, resolution forty eight.
I will say, um, there is an error. This on, uh, the staff recommendation, uh, seems to address resolution number forty five.
Oops.
Oh, our numbers were moving around a little bit.
Well, it was a, it was a late night, making back materials together. Um, ignore, ignore the staff recommendation and put in its place that staff recommends that council passes resolution number forty eight.
And then I would use the subject on the city council communication form for the verbiage of that resolution, cause it has, it has the language for the second. Got it, okay. I looked up here at the staff recommendation. Yeah. Okay. Yes, thank you. Good catch. Um, okay, Ms. Bushman. Do you wanna talk about this at all? Which one?
Oh, I, I, well, just, our deputy city clerk was nice enough to draft this, uh, and put this together. I, I think this is one that we, we have, we have debated, uh, sales tax measures. Uh, this is a property tax measure. We all understand the necessity of it. I think the staff report does a good job of explaining necessity. Uh, I think that in general conversations and previous council meetings, there's a general support for our school district in general and this is allowable. Uh, our city attorney has indicated this is one way, actually the only way that the entire council can show its support.
So we individually care. This is only square.
And is the school district aware of this? It would be shame to pass this.
They are aware and, uh, I sent them a mess, uh, the superintendent a message this morning letting her know it would be on the agenda. And I said, if you do not wanna stay awake until eight forty five P M, I will brief you afterwards. So you need to vote on this in the next fifty nine seconds.
Oh, my God. Okay.
Pre resolution number forty eight, series of twenty twenty four. The resolution supporting, uh, the Lake County School District's middle levy override ballot question. Thirty seconds.
Okay. Um, council member Hill. Councilmember Thomas, yes. Mayor Pro Tem Thar, yes. Mayor Green?
Heck, yes.
And council member Little Now.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
There you go.
Okay, eight, forty four. Fantastic work. Okay, that brings us to darn near the end of our meeting. Uh, any public comments? Yes, sir.
Um, I would like to talk a little bit, I'm Steve Press fashion. I'm very long, very chewy. Um, about the, um, cascade, uh, annexation presentation. Um, so they have eight point four six six, almost eight point five, they have total acres. Uh, two of those acres are in the county. So roughly, um, seventy five percent of their acreage is in the city and twenty five percent is in the county. So, you know, I came up with some questions. Why is this, why, why is this necessary? Is the big question. I mean, what advantages does it give to the property owner? Then, uh, is this gonna be increased road maintenance for the city cost? And, um, for plowing and things like that. And then, you know, even though well, let me, let me put this differently, the way I wanted to start this. I have a scrap metal business. And when I go to sell the scrap, it's not based on my presentation or my personality or how well I look. It's based on the grade of the scrap and how much it weighs. That's why I get paid. Um, this is essentially a development application. Just like any other developer. Um, but their clients, if this is their home, maybe that's true. I don't know. Um, what happens if they want to decide this to sell in two years after they develop this property? So I don't think this should be given any extra consideration because it's a resident, because then this, um, I think creates a legal problem that we're prejudiced against developers now. So I think it should be on equal footing with the developer and residents in this kind of thing. So, um, you know, again, they lived here for four years. That's great, but this just shows somewhat of a tenuous, um, uh, association, I mean, from my perspective, being here forty some odd years. And, um, so I, I, I would like to see some more, uh, data on this thing, you know, what benefit of it is, is to the city, what benefit is to them to do this, um, uh, annexation and what are the downsides of this? And, um, um, I, I guess that's it. Uh, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Speaker. Is there any public comment online? See none. Let's move on, uh, to Mayor's report. I, I wanna give just a heartfelt thank you to Ms. Simonson and our staff for all of their tremendous work on the considerable number of achievements this month. Uh, there, let me just list a few. We had the conclusion, or at least the pause in our wholesale tax discussions that were following several different deadlines over a couple of months. The progress that the planning department has made with their housing variety and development agreements. Our police chief hire, the contract deckard, which we just, for SCR compliance that we just passed tonight, the contract fleet enterprise, which we just passed tonight. The work that, uh, the finance department has done consolidating and simplifying our city bank accounts. I cannot tell you how much simpler that situation is now. I know I am forgetting some, but the amount of things that have been accomplished in this short amount of time, um, was required a lot of blood, sweat, tears, late nights and, and just general hair pulling. Um, and we are such a better, the city is in such a better state situation because of it. So I know I'm feeling a little fatigued after these several months and I'm certain that staff is feeling quite a bit of fatigue. And so I know we have budget coming up and I'm really looking forward to taking a little breath and saying, okay, that was a really dense flurry, but now we're gonna start being, gonna try to be more normal. Because the day-to-day operations of the city require such a transnational work to begin with, and all of this other stuff is extra. Um, so thank you. And, and, and thank you, Ms. Bushman. And like, that, that's it. Like, nobody else from our staff is here anymore. Um, I, I also just wanted to talk about last weekend. It was all Irish all the time plus extra. Um, so we had the Kavosh Theater trip from Belfast perform the play over at Hill Church, which was awesome. I mean, I literally laughed and cried in the same performance and the discussion that the artistic director gave, uh, ma, gave, or she gave a little talk afterwards was equally as fascinating. Uh, it was, uh, a lot of work on behalf of Luke Finkin and Kathleen Fitzsimmons to, to assist in bringing them here. Um, and it was a really cool, it was a really cool performance. The practice St. Patty's Day parade is starting, I know it has, but it continues to draw some, um, it, it was some, some very outside of Levell attention. So we had representatives from Aer Lingus, the Irish airline here. Who marched with us and gave out Irish Aer Lingus pens to the crowd. We had, um, the, uh, a, a, a woman from the consulate, the Irish consulate office in San Francisco came out and was so delighted to be here. Um, and gave part of her presentation at the Irish memorial, miners' memorial convocation in Irish. It, it was really, it was just very, it was very well attended. And again, I'm kind of starting to think of Luke Finkin and Kathleen Fitzsimmons as our ambassadors, um, to Ireland. Also, the Irish Network of Colorado was, was hugely, um, involved in these events this weekend. They, so anyway, I was just was so busy with that. I barely got to see the community event down at the pastime, um, or the Tabor Opera House concert. Like, there was a lot going on. So busy weekend. And that's, that's it for me. Council.
Uh, oh, um, we lost two community members who were homeless. Um, and this is probably just the start. I think it's a solemn reminder that one, we should have had that conversation much, much before this time. Uh, remember very clearly saying, hey, we need to talk about this before we lose community members to this. It's unfortunate that this situation now where, like, that's what's happening. We're comfortable talking about their circumstances, um, I don't feel like it's appropriate, but um, just know that that has happened and I don't feel great about, um, that potentially also continuing to happen. Um, ultimately, to me, what that means as a council member is that it, there is a huge need for us to iron out all these internal processes that are incredibly important. Um, and same time, we consider some of these processes that we don't necessarily are required to have, but we do have them, such as police. And I understand fully why we have them. But it's also just as important to consider the protection that they provide. Uh, counterbalanced with the prevention that is needed towards these situations. I'm not saying, uh, especially amount to any requests that's been made to us, uh, whether or not we should take a stance on that, but more so the idea that we have to have a genuine conversation as a community that we just have not had about homelessness, um, with everyone at the table. It's, I, I don't know when that bright time is, um, but I do think it's really important that we have that conversation. I have a genuine fear that this winter is going to be more brutal for a lot of those community members. Um, in my experience, a lot of those community members are, are vulnerable community, and that includes seniors over sixty five. And living in RVs in Levell, Colorado in winter time. So while I think it's, uh, some of these things can definitely be described as the nice spells and whistles and whipping cream up top. I just don't see this as one of those. And I see this as a little bit more important to our core group. Um, these are community members who have dedicated, you know, the two people, their lives to Levell. And they're, they're not some people who just came up past four years, much less the last ten years. So, yeah. It's important to remember that, that ultimately we are here to serve that community. We are here to serve our constituents as a council and provide services to our constituents. Um, that definitely does include business operations and that definitely does include some protection for law enforcement reaction. But that also does have to include some basic need protections. And whether or not the money comes from us, it is important that we still play a part of that. And I'm sorry, but we just did not play a part of that. And we have not to this point. Um, yeah.
Thanks for the grounding. Do you want to get together and talk about at least like potential legislation we could consider as a council? Or do you see this primarily as a monetary? I mean, just as a council, like how?
There's, there definitely can be legislation. I mean, you know, various things come to mind during COVID, we had an eviction moratorium. There's considerations for stuff like that. There's considerations for stuff like that. Um, I believe that might be a little bit iffy, but. Um, it's, we have options that don't necessarily have to be financial and they are things that we should consider. Um. You know, uh, admit it, I haven't looked deep into it past that. And I do think that there's, um, a need for that and I put that blame on me as much as I would on anyone else. But it is important that we still. Had those conversations to be able to have this reaction. Um. I mean, Tim Best put it best to me, um, earlier today, which is. Uh, you know, we're in this housing crisis here, we're not really reacting as if it's a crisis, we're just kind of. Acknowledging that it's a crisis, when the COVID happened, there was a pretty immediate reaction even by the city. Um, I feel like we should be having the same, if not more, uh, immediate reaction towards this. As well.
Thank you. All right, I'm making some notes, other council reports. You don't wanna talk about your movie starting today?
No.
All right. Public meetings planner. Thank you, I don't know how you managed to get it on to the packet, but thank you. Any, any comments on the public meeting planner, things that need to come off?
Is the rumor of the meeting accurate on?
It is not.
The third?
It is. It is not, we have moved it, um. To be right before our. Meeting, um, it says at six. On November seventh, but it's really, I think, five thirty. November seventh, right before our regular city. November sixth, right, I'm sorry, November sixth, yeah. So it would have been the seventh, but I think based on our last meeting, we were gonna piggyback it or just put it right before city council on the. Exactly, at five or six, I mean.
I'm on the sixth at five.
Five, five thirty. It was by thirty, yeah. I don't think it'll be long, but that, that is, um. I think we're just kind of weeding it.
Okay.
For Laura right now.
Those, those, those things are definitely really difficult for me, I know I emailed you, but if we could somehow. Align on Tuesdays or city councils, that would definitely work better for me.
I think we also might have a bit, uh, easier time with quarantine because.
Yeah, was there a quorum at the last one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay.
But there is not a Lura meeting on, uh, October thirty.
Correct. And it just works with how they are.
It does show that on.
Okay, it's just a cork, it tries to put it in every month.
Okay.
Yeah, cause it's auto set on.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I need to meet. And I already changed the one for the.
Thank you.
To the six.
All right. So any other comments or input? Okay, then I say fifty-nine.
She almost won the prize with her.
You did, I don't remember what your, what your guess was.